Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
Ms. Solomon?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
I'm sure you have a call.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay. Wow, that was a call. Any questions? Okay. Oh, we don't have our clickers. All right, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, okay, motion passes. Going on to information items, 3.01, non-discretionary items in the superintendent FY '24 funding request.
All right, so first topic for our work session is to go back to our FY '24 budget request and look at some of our non-discretionary requirements. Also going to look at some of our other funds. I also attached the agenda as a draft resolution. Now, you're not taking action on that tonight, but wanted to get it to you in advance so you have it. All of our funds, and we'll look at these non-discretionary items tonight. And then so you have them a couple of weeks in advance before actually voting on the other funds and our operating funds. So went ahead and gave you that resolution. So want to look at non-discretionary and then also look at our federal funds and our other funds. We have our school nutrition, our fleet services, capital projects, workers' comp, and health benefits that we'll take a look at at the end. So context matters. So looking at inflation over the last couple of years, which obviously impacts our expenditures in our operating fund. We took this into account when we looked at our discretionary expenditures and our compensation as well. But it has a big impact and kind of a mandatory, non-discretionary impact on our non-compensation as well because a lot of our contracts that we have, or it could be for mowing, it could be for HVAC maintenance, those things are tied to percentage increases and they look at what that inflation CPI index is from year to year. So our non-discretionary items, it costs more next year to do the same thing as this year. So this slide should look familiar. It's pulled from the superintendent's budget presentation that goes over each of our major categories that we have tagged as non-discretionary. I'm not going to go through each and every one of these, but I do want to highlight a few of those. So I said keep the lights on and the buses running because some of the big things and our biggest ticket items are in our maintenance and on our transportation side. So we have talked about our custodial contract. This is the increase in the contract with a slight CPI increase for the following year. Very minimal amount, but wanted to point it out because it was on our maintenance side. Just trying to keep up with with our growth and our replacement cycles. We only have $150,000 a year right now tagged for furniture replacement. It's completely inadequate. We're just trying to put a little bit into that. And in the five-year plan, we put, start increasing that exponentially, but we start increasing it a little bit more each year as well so we can try to replace our furniture in our aging schools. Have utility increases that, we're experiencing some of that this year and we'll continue to see it next year. On the transportation side, the fuel line, it's a million dollars total. Part of that is what we already added in this year. So if you recall, in FY '23, we adopted a budget. And then shortly after that, we got additional state money and we took $960,000 of that and applied it towards our fuel budget for FY '23. And then we're adding a little bit more in FY '24, rounding it up to a million dollars. So our total fuel budget now is $2.5 million. In about a year and a half time, we've gone from about 1.2 to 1.5, all the way up to 2.5. So we've seen drastic increases there. When I do my mid-year report, I'll explain that we're actually looking pretty good in fuel for this year. We're going to kind of hit it spot on. So feeling pretty good about that for next year. That's kind of assuming that our rates are going to be where they're at, maybe a slight increase, but looking at an average fuel price for the entire year. So our other big-ticket item on transportation, so about a million dollars. And that's split up between two big things on our bus side. It's our maintenance side. So we're seeing an increase in cost of maintenance. Now that goes into our fleet services fund. And then also just an increases in our bus prices. So I'll say when I first started doing budget four or five years ago, we were budgeting about $110,000 per bus and we're closer to about $150,000 fully loaded now for a bus. Those prices, you know, supply, demand, they've just, in the last year, probably gone up about 15%, 20%. So we have-
Are we seeing questions till the end? Yes, please. Thank you.
So we have about 10 total buses. That's not an increase, that's total bus replacement in this budget. That increase of about $500,000 is actually just because of increased prices of our buses. I think it was $450,000. And then the rest of that is our fleet maintenance costs. Couple of things I want to point out. We did an adjustment of our salary lapse. This will also be in the mid-year report. I'm going to jump forward a slide and then I'm going to come back a slide. So this is also in the mid-year report. So one of the things we're kind of happy about, excited about, but at the same time has a cost, is we are seeing more experienced teachers joining the division than we are inexperienced teachers. So on average, our teachers are more experienced than they were in the past. So typically, historically, we would lose, perhaps we had a 30-year teacher retire and you replace that teacher with a brand-new teacher or somebody with very few years of experience and you experience a savings there. And you can see on the data on the right, that's our average years of experience. And you see in the five years, the four years prior to this, our average years of experience was dropping every year, right? And that meant that our teachers that we were hiring were less experienced, but also cheaper. Cheaper, yes, thank you. Than the ones that were leaving us. But you see in 2023, we actually see for the first time in that five years, it's gone back up the other way. Now, that costs money because, you know, half a year of experience or this increase in years of experience costs about 1.2, 1.5 million dollars in additional salary. And so that has an impact on FY '23 and has an impact on FY '24. Because what we're seeing in '23 is we're not recognizing as much of those savings as we were in the past. So we need to back out what we reduce in the budget for salary lapse. And explaining that very quickly, we build our budget based on our actual people here today, that are here today. We project forward what their new salary would be based on the proposed budget. And then we get that total and we back out $3 million, is what we've done for the last several years. And we've always hit that mark. It hasn't been a problem because as you can see on this data, we've been, that's the direction we've been going. And in fact, we've been over the $3 million. But what we're seeing now is that we're not recognizing that full $3 million and we're watching it very closely in FY '23. So what we did for FY '24 was instead of backing out $3 million from that total budget, we're just, we reduced that $3 million by 1.25. So we're only backing out 1.75 now. I know that's a lot, does that make sense?
Yeah.
So then for next year, are you going to maybe even be at a million or something? Or is that what you're expecting?
So I think we'll see how we end up next year. In FY '24. So about the same time next year, we'll look at where our new teachers are that we hired and if we've started a trend where it's, where our average years of experience has now gone up to 11.5 to 12, you know, we're back up there, maybe we need to adjust it again.
Okay.
So when you say adjustments of our budgeted salary lapse number by 1.25 million, does that mean you're increasing it?
We're decreasing it.
Decreasing the salary.
So the salary, so we built our total budget, 250 million, right? Total salaries, I'm making that number up, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head. And we took that 250, reduced it by 3 million. So we only budgeted 247 because we knew that we were never going to actually incur $250 million because of vacancies and salary lapse. So instead of reducing it by 3 million, we're only reducing it by 1.75. That's basically an addition to the budget. That's a new expenditure to the budget.
Right.
It's an adjustment to the base.
Got it.
Yep.
All right, so going back, you said?
Yeah, and I just want to point out on the left, because it's kind of fascinating and I think it's good to point it out for our students, it's a good trend. As you can see where we've adjusted kind of with each of these zero-to-five gaps or the five-year increments. Historically, we've been seeing that zero-to-five number growing every year and it actually decreased in 2023 over 2022. And our areas there in the middle are growing. And as we've talked about in the Fab C meeting, some of that is, this is also, we have teachers that are moving up a step, you know? But still, we were seeing those increases in that zero-to-five category even with those increases in the past. So I think it's fascinating, it's a great story to tell that we are getting more experience and we're maintaining some of those experienced teachers, or we're hiring more experienced teachers. I don't know, maybe from south, I don't know.
And as I have noted on occasion, I view it as taking three years to learn how to be a teacher. So zero to five, the first three years, you don't have a really qualified teacher. So it's great to have more.
We still have a lot at zero to five, but I like the trend that it's heading.
What's the proportionality of that? Like how, what is that zero-to-five percentage-wise? Is that the 60%?
About 40%, 40%.
40%.
But you also note too, more specifically, the biggest impact on our salary scale that we adjusted last year was steps six through 25 is where they saw the biggest gains and, well, understand. And we're growing those spaces, so that's-
Our turnover rate went down. And then when we did replace them, we replaced them with more experienced teachers than historically we had.
Do we still have to cap on more and replace them? Cap on experience?
We do cap. And I will say in hard-to-staff areas like mathematics and special education, no, we don't.
So some of those teachers may have more experience
That's right.
because they've been capped.
Yeah, correct. This is where they're actually at on our scale, not necessarily, their actual years of experience could be higher if we capped them and we brought them in. So another area on our compensation is adjustment of our hourly compensation. So we were seeing that we were exceeding in some line items in our hourly comp. So a couple of things that go into that in FY '24, we're increasing our base rates, we're increasing hourly rates for our employees. So when they do see additional hours or they do incur overtime, that's at a higher rate. So we increased our base hourly rates, was it 3% or 5%? 3%. But then we also looked at where we had significant deficits in FY '23 or projected. The biggest adjustment we're making there is on our bus driver hourly line. We were looking at exceeding that in FY '23. So we're putting some money back into the budget for hourly compensation for bus drivers. Additionally, in our health benefits, we're increasing the actual operating fund cost over the base of about $250,000. We're also increasing our employee premiums for the first time in a very long time by just 5%. It's a manageable increase, it's not a significant increase for any of our employees overall. We're talking at the highest tier, it's a couple hundred dollars for the year. It's, and we have pretty good premiums right now for employees. So that has about 500 or $450,000 that it brings into our health benefits fund and that helps offset the cost to our operating.
So, did you say when the last time we increased that was?
So we did an adjustment to our rates two or three years ago where most of our rates actually came down. There was one or two rates that might have gone up by a few bucks, but not anything significant. It was more of trying to even them out.
Well, let's just get in the cost of health insurance premiums. I know we offer premium holidays, I was just wondering. Here we go.
All right. Other, any questions on our operating fund before I jump into some of the other stuff?
Dr. Warner, can I speak with you?
Sure. Do we have the amended, have you adjusted the staffing standards to account for some of the savings that were reductions in the budget?
Yes.
And could I get a new copy of that so that I can see where those adjustments were? I don't have one. It doesn't have to be now, you can just send it to me later. Because I've got like three copies of the staffing standards and now I don't know which one is the right one. And, let's see. I think that was really just it, is that I wanted to, if you could just send it to me.
We'll go around one more time if someone comes up, on Dr. Chase?
No, I think I've been on the Fab C and seen more.
Okay. Ms. Halsted?
Can I go last? I'm trying to see if I can reconcile this in my head without asking the question.
Sure. Ms. Sigmund?
I think the question I had was just about our percentage of vacancies with this. Is it, like I see how many people we have at each level. I know that we will never be 100% staff because people are coming and going every day. But what is our trend? Where do we, like, is that getting better or are we keeping, are we closing that gap too of where our-
We're definitely in the midst of a national teacher shortage, just a good question about it. Our hard-to-staff areas are harder to staff than they ever have been. We started the year with 111 licensed teaching positions that were vacant. So that was on day one of the school year. Right now, we're at 75?
77.
77.
Okay.
And some of those are the same and some of them are different because of that ebb and flow.
And like, I get that there's national numbers and it's a national problem. That's why, like, really interested in how we are dealing with that here.
We're doing better than most, but at the same time, we have a competitor that's not far away from us that is pricing us out of the market and there's some supply and demand issues there.
May I offer one extra?
Sure.
Every year I've been here, we have hired more people than we've lost. But you can't tell the story of staffers without talking about growth. And so every year, we add to the number of positions we have to have and that's how we keep getting further in.
Okay.
But thanks, Patrick.
Why do we have vacancies, you said? Did I see we had 111 vacancies at some point?
At the start of the school year.
Yeah. So it's 77 now.
When you say we hire more, is that before school or is that by the end of the school year?
Well, and again, it's not a commodity. You know, so we've got special education teachers which have a higher vacancy rate than mathematics.
No, I understand, I'm just saying, Patrick's saying we hire more than we lose.
Right, we look on an annual basis.
Is that during the course of the year, it's not?
Like how many new, how many growth positions do we have this year? So of that-
About 60.
So of that 100 and whatever that we started with vacant, 60 of those were new positions. Is that right?
Not necessarily, because you do have some hard-to-staff positions that are persistently-
But I'm saying you had to fill 60 new positions at the same time that you were having to deal with vacancies.
Yeah.
Or-
Yeah, yeah. So it's really the three things that you pointed out. It's new positions, churn, and then persistently hard to fill. It's a great question.
Ms. Guy?
I'm good.
Okay.
I just have two questions and these are not for now, but if you could send the 41 growth positions that we're going to add, I think that would be good to have because a question I would anticipate would be if you're expecting 350-plus students, why do you need 41? I know why we need 41 because a lot of them are support positions, but I think that would be helpful to have that. Just send that to us.
It's actually attached to the agenda item.
You got it, okay.
So-
Well, but I'd like to have it sent, you know, as well. Because it's just, it's just a question that I think may come up and I'd like to be able to explain that it's not 41 positions for 350 students as a requirement, you know, overall. And the other question I had, which you can, you know, get back later, is what was the average fuel cost, you know, that we're projecting for this year? Because when we added that 900,000, prices were up closer to $4 a gallon or they were much higher and then they've come down. So I'm assuming that's why we're not needing to add more next year. But, you know, in terms of what was the average price this year and what are we projecting for next year? And then, you know, that's a crystal ball, but it's just based on the numbers. I don't need it now, I'd just like to-
Yeah, I'll just generally respond to that. So when we actually increased by a million dollars for FY '23, that was assuming that prices were going to come down some. Sorry, I forget the exact dollar amount that we used, but we knew they weren't going to stay at $5 a gallon, or at least we were hoping. We knew that if it did, we were going to be in trouble. So we knew it was going to come down some and so we were already looking at an average that we are seeing in FY '23 because we're hitting it like right on the head. We're doing really well there in FY '23. And so we're anticipating that same amount for '24. We just added about $40,000 to the fuel budget to give us a little bit of cushion for '24.
So if the fuel prices go up, we're going to have to adjust that.
And if they go down?
So maybe somehow we can note that that projection is based on, you know, the cost to remain the same so there's not a shock later on if we, I think, God forbid, have another huge, you know, cost to that and we have to add money and people will say, why didn't you, you put it in? It's just sometimes trying to anticipate, you know, potential questions.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and just ask a couple and I'll go around for the next round. So in talking about the buses, and you're saying you're going to, in the FY '24, put in 10 additional buses and you expect to pull some off the fleet as well?
So we're adding 10 new buses total, right? So we'll buy 10 buses on July 1st. A lot of that really needs to be 100% replacement. So we're not adding a ton of growth. Some of that is because of the, some of the other programmatic changes we're making. We think we can take those savings from those buses and reallocate them for the growth. But we definitely need to replace our current fleet.
Yeah.
Is some of that the not traveling in the middle of the day?
No.
I was just wondering if that was part of where you thought there might be a little savings?
I think our realignment of our Level 2 students.
And when you said that the cost of the buses have gone up, there's still a number of buses that we have not received and therefore have not paid for. Are we frozen at the rate that we-
It's locked in, correct. It's locked into a year and a half ago.
Okay, yeah, because we've been waiting for a very long time. So how many buses do we currently still have on order?
I will say that number is coming down.
Yeah.
So I don't have the exact number, but just in the last, like, two or three weeks, we just keep picking up eight, 10 more. And now we're trying to get them out on the, out on the street now that we have them actually physically in our possession.
But then you have to take them to get-
We have to get the radios, which we can't do off, it's got to be onsite to do that and we have to get the DMV tags and everything.
Right.
Licensed and tagged. So it takes a few weeks.
It does still after they come in?
Yeah.
So-
So some of the ones that we got three weeks ago, now they're starting to work themselves into the fleet. And the ones that we just got in the last two weeks, we're back in that rotation of trying to get them out there as well.
Okay. All right. Let me go around again. Oh, girls, did you want to?
I'm not going to say.
Ask some question?
So I have questions about, kind of a follow-up to your bus replacement. Why specifically do we need bus replacements? Is it, is it not something that we can fix with maintenance or?
Yeah, great, great question. So we have several, several buses, I'm going to say over 50 that probably are over 10 years old. And so our goal is at about 12 years that we should start taking a bus off the road and having it more as a reserve fleet. So between that 12 to 15 years. So it's more of an aging fleet. So when we get to, you know, 200,000 miles, and that's a rough number, there's no hard number on the mileage because a bus could be still in good condition, but that 12 to 15 years, 150 to 200,000 miles, we have to start looking at rotating it off and having it more as a substitute bus.
Okay. And then also, on average, how much are teachers paid per hour? And then does that differ based on the subject that they teach and the years of experience they have?
So definitely by years of experience. So the bottom of our pay scale for teachers is about $34 an hour now. 32, and I think for next year, it's a little over 33. And so that's going to range, it's going to go up as you get higher up the scale. But new teachers are about $33.
What about for subjects? Does it change based on like core subjects?
It does not, although one of the things that is not currently in the budget, but it was one of the, if not the, first item that was removed or the top of the list of things that we would like to put back in is differentiated compensation for certain subject areas like math or special education, hard-to-staff areas.
Okay. And then also, what's the salary lapse? I heard a couple of times that I went for like a more definition.
Yeah. So we budget for a teacher, so that math teacher that we're unable to fill, so that position stays vacant for the entire year. So we budget for it, but then it's not actually filled, so we're not paying that salary. So we have what we call as a salary lapse.
So just some extra money?
Correct.
Okay.
Another, so it's two things. It's a position that's unfilled and it's also a position that we budget for a 30-year teacher and say $80,000 a year, but when that teacher retires and we replace them with a new teacher, a new teacher is coming in, $50,000 a year, so there are savings there as well.
Thank you.
Good questions.
Catherine, do you have any questions?
Sure, I just have a really quick one. This was something you said. I think you mentioned that salary rates, base salary rates for employees have increased across the board. Was that something you mentioned?
Yeah, I think, back to the salary lapse discussion of, we're seeing that the teachers we hire and the staff that we hire have more years of experience, which means that base rate has increased.
Oh, okay, okay, cool. And then I was just curious, was that across all positions or were you just referring to teachers specifically?
So I was probably referring to just teachers, but I think it's something we're seeing maybe across all positions as well as we try to hire from private sectors that are more competitive now as well.
Sure, thank you.
Ms. Halsted?
So, thank you for letting me go last. All right, so I think I took two questions, I'm trying to look at this more objectively, but let me ask first about our paraprofessionals. Where are we at with them? Like where do we stand now in terms of the increase in favor of them? And because are they not, most of them are ESSR funded right now, correct? Was that part of it? I thought some of them were on that line, no. All right, so they're not on that line anymore. So where are we in terms of bringing them up to a livable wage?
So one of the next things that was on the superintendent's, first things that were cut out of the budget that we would like to add back in is adjustment of that paraprofessional scale. So in the current year, the minimum para-scale is $1497. And we want to make that actually in the budget proposal or in the second, in the second year, first year of the five-year plan, look at actually taking that and making it a percentage of the teacher scale. So it'd be about $1.5 million and we want to take that and just make it 50% of the teacher scale for every step. So as the teacher scale increases, your para-scale actually increases as well. And that would be probably double-digit percentage increases for our paraprofessionals. Right now, what's in the budget is putting them on a step scale but not really adjusting it to tie it to the teacher scale. So it's about a 7.4% average increase for paraprofessionals.
But that was taken out?
No. That is still in there.
That's still in there, okay.
What's not in there is adjusting them to tie them to the teacher scale, which would be another increase on top of that.
Okay. What was the cost of that, just out of curiosity?
1.5.
And what did you say the increase, did you say 7.4%?
Right, right now, what's in the budget is an average of, I believe it was 7.4% for our paraprofessionals.
So that's just composed?
That's what is currently in the superintendent's proposed budget.
How much are paraprofessionals paid per hour?
So the starting pay for a para is about $1492 or $1497 an hour. Yeah, it's a little under 15 an hour.
Less than.
But Starbucks employees make just tiny bit less than that.
No, they make-
Oh, they make, yeah, that's what I'm saying, Starbucks employees make more.
And minimum wage is $12 an hour, which is one of the reasons why we wanted to target that.
100%. So let me ask you this then, just trying to look at this objectively and gain each line item here for what it's worth. Like I'm presenting whatever number, final number is, assuming I might have to fight for every dollar. What's my, we took some out and we still ended up with 416, correct?
He did, we haven't.
Right, right, but I'm saying, I'm saying, as I'm viewing this, it was taken out. What's my, what's my boiling point and what's my selling point? Can you help me understand? I mean, I know what I see in here, but-
So that's definitely on your discretionary topic of conversation and that's certainly what you all should be discussing at your work session next week. But, you know, we do have a handful of discretionary items that, you know, you should definitely give some due diligence to reviewing. That's number two on our list. Number one was the differentiated compensation. But that is for this board to decide as to what it prioritizes and what it doesn't.
Do you have something else? No, okay. All right, we can go around again if anybody-
You don't look satisfied.
I'm not, but-
We're doing, we will come back to discretionary.
No, no, I know, but go ahead.
Okay.
Remember, this is the superintendent's budget.
I know, I know.
Yeah. And we are allowed to make adds and changes, as we do.
Yes, that's what, I guess I feel like, looking at that though, like those were things that are taken out. I'm talking about things that are on it. There's still a huge differentiation between what we asked for last year and what we're asking for this year. So assuming that they might not give us the entire 416, there are still things on this budget that to me would be, I mean, I would probably be unwilling to waiver on.
Yeah, and that's our stance, right? This would be your stance. This is needs, right? This budget is all needs, not wants. We don't get any wants in this budget, it's all need.
And priorities. Okay, Dr. Warner? You're good? Okay, Dr. Chase, still good?
Yeah, so I just wanted to go back to this question about paraprofessionals. So how many paraprofessionals do we have funded for next year with the end of the ESSR money?
Um, down to about thirty-four.
Yeah.
I was gonna say twenty-five to thirty, to thirty-nine.
Thirty-four. And so, then after next year, we will be going back to the, the pre-COVID paraprofessionals, is that right?
No, you, you'll go to what your staffing standards indicate.
Okay, so, then next year, we'll be having to add to the budget to, because the staffing standard will be higher.
If you choose to add paraprofessionals to your staffing standards, then yes. If you don't choose to add paraprofessionals to your staffing standard, then no.
So, the thirty-four that we have this year, is that, are they in there as part of the new staffing standards?
They, they're, they're above and beyond, correct?
Correct, it's staffing standards and then thirty-four on top of that for one more year.
Okay, just trying to understand. Thanks.
Do you have a big thumbs down?
Yeah, okay, um, Ms. Holstead, do you wanna wait a minute?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Sigmund?
I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Guy?
Uh, Ms. Sigmund did not like my comments, so I was, I will not say it. It's not good.
Okay. Ms. Healy?
How many paras total do we have in this budget? Thirty-four plus?
Yep, I've got it for you. Just gotta double-check.
If you wanna jump to the next, wherever you got another question, I'll have it.
Well, it's, it's gonna be based on that because I, I wanna follow up on Dr. Chase's question about the, you know, the ESSR funding, but I wanna see how many we have total, and the total would include the thirty-four ESSR. And that's in the budget number. But, I would, is there a difference between what we have this year and what we're proposing next year in that total number of paras?
So, paraprofessionals in our operating fund is five hundred and eighty-nine?
Yep.
Plus the thirty-four in our ESSR.
All right.
So, they're separate, they're, they're two totals?
Correct.
Okay, good.
So, the ESSR-funded paras, hypothetically, will they just, those positions will just go away?
After next year.
Or will we need to absorb them into the?
It's gonna be your choice. If you absorb them, you should modify your staffing standard to absorb them. If you don't absorb them, you would leave your staffing standard alone, and those positions would go away.
So, so this five eighty-nine meets our current staffing standards?
It does.
It does, okay. So, they're, so, the thirty-four positions would then be savings unless we change our standards?
It would not be a savings because they're federal one-time.
I, I would say, right, 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 but I mean, we would, what I'm saying is, we aren't gonna have to add to our budget if those positions go away.
Correct.
To, to maintain our staffing.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. So, the funding for these thirty-four is included in that, that, uh, miss, miniscule?
Miscellaneous, that miscellaneous federal money.
Federal, federal money, is that?
Yeah, so you're talking about a?
They're in our grants fund, so, separate from our operating fund.
Right.
So, it's not even in the federal?
Oh, 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 right.
No.
It's not in that federal line.
Right.
So, a little, little bit over a million and a half?
Right.
Okay.
In, in paras that are ESSR-funded right now, so?
Right, and, and where are these paras located? Are they all?
Mainly elementary.
All elementary or?
Basically, two per elementary.
Two per elementary?
Uh, currently? Well, no, for next year. For next year, it's two per elementary.
Right, this year, we have more than thirty-four?
We have substantially more than thirty-four.
Thirty-four, we have a hundred and ten. So, we're going?
A hundred and ten ESSR ones this year?
Yeah.
Oh!
Yeah, so we have a hundred and ten.
So, that means we're gonna draw. So, a hundred and ten?
And this was in your ESSR plan kinda all along?
Yeah, yeah. I know, Dr. Chase has always been?
Yeah, this is, this is kinda like where you don't find a position as a one-time money.
Against that.
What I'm asking is, I'm concerned that we're keeping our numbers. Right, right.
So, the five eighty-nine includes thirty-four ESSR positions?
No, a hundred and?
It does not.
No. What does it include? No ESSR positions?
No ESSR positions.
No ESSR, that's straight operation.
None. All right, so, if we take this number, this, this five eighty-nine and the thirty-four, we're still gonna be less than we have this year?
Yes.
Yes.
So, it's, did you say a hundred and ten?
Yep.
Yes.
What's this year? Minus thirty-four.
Yep.
And so, where are they getting lost from?
Well, right now, you have a high degree of churn, so, no one?
Yeah. I'm not, yeah, I, I'm assuming we can find positions, but I'm, I'm more concerned about the services that these paras are performing that are not going to be available to assist the schools. Because they're, they're, they're all at the schools, right?
Well, this is also why, you know, you, you try to establish some guidelines for staffing and how many people you put in every building so that, you know, you kinda don't fall into that, into kinda where we are right now, so that you don't, you don't get yourself into this position. The, the ESSR positions were funded presumably, uh, and this was probably designed to help with learning loss coming out of the pandemic. So, your reliance on that, as your money starts to dwindle, will be reduced.
Right, but the learning loss is not going away.
Well, I mean, the hope is that in elementary school, that we're starting to get back to where we were, right?
Yeah, where you were before.
Like, your kindergartners and first and second graders didn't go through COVID, so
Yeah.
they're theoretically at the place that first, kindergarten first and second were three years ago. So, can we go back to the staffing standard we have then? Is the, the theory?
Then you've got the fifth.
Yep, and then maybe that's where you put these thirty-four, right, depending on what the principal sees as?
Well, this is, this is important, I mean, to think about, to know where we're gonna be having these losses.
Right.
And what are we gonna do to assist the schools with the services that?
If they, if they need it here.
I'm, I'm sorry, out of curiosity, could you mind, would you mind clarifying what the ESSR positions are that say?
ESSR funding?
ESSR funding?
Yeah, so, um, there was federal funding that was specifically for, like, pande- pandemic relief funds?
Came in three different?
So, these won't be included in our upcoming budget? This is?
No.
Okay, so is this strictly?
Thirty-four are gonna be included.
Those funds run out twenty-two years.
Today, we have a hundred and ten funded.
Okay.
This year.
Paraprofessionals. Right, sure.
Well, the ESSR, it's what we're down to now.
Okay, so?
Cuz we, we've spent down other ESSR fundings that we've had
Uh-huh.
ongoing, and this is the last part that we have.
We hired extra paras to try to help with learning loss, so that was where we put those ESSR resources.
Okay.
And so, we, this year, twenty twenty-three, we had a hundred and ten. Next year, we'll have thirty-four. What will, what will happen to, cuz?
Well, with a lot, you, we have a lot of attrition. I would imagine some of them have become permanent employees.
Okay.
We have five hundred and eighty-nine altogether, so?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, we're not talking about somebody losing a job.
So, some, some of them will be?
There's no expectation. There will be positions.
Okay.
It's just that there's going to be positions that are filled now that aren't going to be filled, and that's the difference between?
Won't exist.
So, they'll be absorbed to that.
It means they have to operate without the help. Next year, they won't have the help they have this year.
That's right.
Okay.
But we've also changed the staffing standards to try to reflect what we need.
A little bit more stability.
Based on?
Based on?
The students' needs?
Mm-hmm.
To try to come back from? Right, so the paras are in the classroom helping to tutor students and things like that. So, the teacher will not have that help in the classroom as we reduce the numbers of paras. Were paraprofessionals put there to try to kind of help?
Give more to COVID?
Assist COVID, to get more people back on track, okay?
Yes, right. Right. So, they could pull in a small group.
More smaller group instruction, yeah. Okay.
So, we get money from the federal government for that?
So, more concentrated based on the students who need it?
Needs.
Okay.
Right.
Are there current, um, vacancies in the para?
Significant.
Yeah. Okay, and is that accounted for in our new budget? I know you mentioned that the salary is currently fourteen dollars. Are we looking to increase that? Yes, yes.
Right, about an average of seven and, point, seven and a point four percent, yeah.
Okay.
Seven point four.
So, that brings that up to what?
About fifteen.
Well, yeah, the, the minimum of the scale doesn't increase by seven percent because if we did that, then
As much as the clean?
That's a really good point.
we can create compression, so the minimum of the scale
Existing employees.
was coming up about three percent. So, the bottom of the scale comes up about three percent, but then, everybody on the scale currently, it's an average of seven point four.
So, the wages for paraprofessionals will go from, what is it right now, to fourteen?
Seventy-seven.
That's the starting wage, but it, but it, but it's a pretty wide range.
Starting wage?
There's some that are.
Will the starting wage, like, will the base move up next year?
Well, seven percent?
Yes, yes.
Well, do you know?
About three percent.
About three percent.
Three percent.
Everybody do that now.
Average of seven percent across the scale. So, that's three dollars, four dollars and twenty cents above what they were doing.
So, for fourteen something to, uh?
The three of one.
I'll get my calculator out.
Eighteen, nineteen, seventeen, or?
Fifteen thirty-seven.
Me, I'm gonna stop using my calculator.
Fifteen thirty-seven.
I was gonna ask you.
It goes to fifteen to one.
I started ordering. Okay. Like, I literally just opened my calculator, like, I'm gonna do it over here.
All right, um, so, ladies, did you have any other questions?
Um, really quickly, is, are the para salaries, is that on a scale in the same way the other teachers' salaries are?
We are moving them to a scale for the first time in a long time.
We had a scale, but unfortunately, we couldn't give the increases every year, so it went out the window.
And now, we're bringing it back?
We're bringing it back. So, people can hopefully get a raise, but one thing that's really important when we talk about a scale is we can't commit to anything beyond the year that we're working on. Because there's another board, another budget, you know, and you just can't commit to future. And, and issue that we've had is people see a scale and they have the expectation that when they get to that year, that's where they're gonna be. Which in a perfect world, that's the case, but it's not always, sometimes there's just not money available.
What about, um, teachers who help kids with, uh, special needs, or is there any salary increase in their? That gets, like, the paraprofessionals who work with special needs kids get a little bit more than other paraprofessionals. Um, and teachers, special ed teachers, I think, get a little stipend as well. Okay. Um, but? But not overall in their salary? Well, it's?
Yeah, they will be part of the salary.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, stipends separate from a salary. Most, most of the career people prefer it being in their salary because then it counts toward their retirement benefits. Cuz stipend is just separate. It's, it's like a, a flat piece, like coaches and, um, you know, people?
Okay. Who do extra side jobs on it.
Get it for extra, extra jobs. Get stipends.
All right, do we have any more questions? Cuz we need to keep an eye on time and move on to the next discussion item? Okay, let's go to the next discussion item, the public-private day-school memorandum of agreement.
Madam Chair, we, uh, sent a letter to the county administrator with some edits to the memorandum of agreement and have not received a response from the county administration. It's my recommendation that the board discuss this with your counterparts at your three-on-three or your joint schools' work group.
Okay, so, can we go ahead and then add this item to the three-on-three on February twenty-eighth? And then, we'll also, um, add it as an item on our seven-on-seven so we can make sure we get it assigned and? Get that playground, please?
I, I think they've approved, I heard that they approved the playground. Has anybody else heard that? I, I thought that they had approved, they told the county administrator to go forward with the playground, and that's not the case?
At, at present, we, we wouldn't know one way or another because we haven't received a response or correspondence.
I didn't get a response in my letter either. I was sort of through the grapevine, Dr. Young, so?
Okay.
Can you, should we ask the superintendent to follow up to see if they've moved forward with the playground because?
At least now.
It's completely independent from the, from the U.
Yes, yes, and that's what we wanted to keep it.
Understanding that, it's the will of the board.
Yes.
Okay, all right, any announcements? All right, and I think we are ready to go into closed session.
I was gonna talk sometime about the three-on-three and what we wanna put on that agenda.
The three-on-three, she sent us an email to ask?
Yeah, I saw that, but I didn't, I didn't know we wanted to discuss it here.
Um, we can take a few minutes and then we're gonna go and get our dinner and then go into closed session.
Yeah, I just had one question for people to think about. It's, this is gonna be a long, extended time dealing with it, but the, um, uh, the cost sharing, uh, or tactic, whatever, the revenue sharing agreement, do we want to put that on the three-on-three or do we wanna hold it for the seven-on-seven? That's, you know, that's my only question. I think the seven-on-seven, we're gonna be talking a lot with budget.
Yeah.
My recommendation would be to get, get it started so that we can at least say, but are, are we interested in pursuing that?
I would say?
I would say, yes, let's bring it to three-on-three, and then if we need to go further into seven-on-seven, we can. And did, were you able to find the old one?
The old revenue sharing agreement?
No, we've looked, the Missy's records only go back to?
No, it's, it's just pre-Missy.
Yeah, I know, but she looked back at all the records.
If I, if I can, I can look at the board of supervisors, cuz I recall a few people that were on there. If I can get an approximate year, can we, can we look that? Because it was actually signed by both sides, as I recall, but it was probably at least fifteen years ago.
And it would've been an election, is that right?
It was the year before.
That's what I mean.
Oh, yeah, yes, yes, because it was signed and then, yes, that's right, so that's probably like?
That means every other year rather than?
Oh, four, oh, three, it's either oh, three or oh, seven.
Right. Yeah.
Um, we have an announcement.
Sure.
So, uh, both of us were planning to, like, write a newsletter and a blog. We've already kinda started on the blog. We'll send that over to Sandra when we finish the rough draft, but we just wanted to let you know it's gonna be in the student record.
Sure, yeah, I was also gonna bring that up. So, I have my report tonight, so I was gonna bring up with the chair and vice chair just to make sure everything's okay. I wasn't sure, would you have been able to wait till after the meeting or would now work too?
For?
I, I just wanted to run everything past you to make sure everything in my report is okay. I was gonna introduce, um, our new, uh, channels of communication. So, we sent out a Google form to all the students, and this is things that I'll bring up in my report tonight. We opened up some channels of communication between the students and the board, so we sent out a Google form to, I think, a hundred and thirty students.
To the SE representatives, all SE representatives.
Yes, the SE class representatives. Um, so I'll bring that up during my report tonight, and then, we also wanted to mention that we've started a blog and a newsletter.
Mm-hmm.
We're in the process of starting it, um, to communicate the decisions and the discussions of board with the students. So, I just kinda wanted to run that past everyone.
That sounds great.
It does.
Okay.
It's gonna be upcoming, uh, decisions that are?
Yes. Sure.
Yes, that's what the news, the blog, kind of getting students' opinions and through Google forms, and then the newsletter will be reporting that and then explaining what happens in school board meetings.
As long as Sandra has given the stamp of approval before you start.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. That sounds great, thank you ladies.
Good job.
That's great, yeah.
Love it, love it, love it. All right, so let's take a few minutes and go ahead and get dinner and then Ms. Healy will read us into closed session so that we can.
And be in closed session?
What's that?
Who will be in closed session? Because not everybody should come back.
Yes, board members, Chris and Patrick and Jason.
Okay. Yes, she gave me two copies and said to. Out of closed session?
Madam Chairman, pursuant to section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the closed meeting of the School Board of Stafford County on February 14th, 2023 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Stafford County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion commending the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second.
Okay, we got our Missy. Missy, can you pull the board?
Yes, ma'am, Dr. Chase.
Agree.
Ms. Guy.
Agree.
Ms. Halsted.
Agree.
Ms. Healy.
Agree.
Ms. Randall.
Agree.
Ms. Sigmund.
Agree.
And Dr. Warner.
Agree.
Madam Chair, the motion passes.
Okay, is there an action?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I move pursuant to Title 8, Section 20 to 23-372 of the Virginia Administrative Code to recommend that the State Board of Education revoke the teaching licensure of the former high school teacher discussed during the closed session.
I will second, but with the amendment that it is 720, not 320.
Oh. Okay, any, anything, anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor, cast your vote.
Aye.
Tally the vote, motion passes 7 to 0. Okay, moving on to our business meeting, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and let's begin with the presentation of the national colors and the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, Stafford High School's Navy JROTC color guard, Cadet Emily Burnett, Cadet Brandon Smith, Cadet Juliana Pixley, Cadet Quentin Gregory, with the instructors for the Navy JROTC, Command Master Chief Louis Wilson, and Chief Petty Officer Damian Wilson. And we thank you all very much for coming this evening. Okay, Missy, can we have a roll call, please? Ms. Hall, sorry.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase.
Here.
Ms. Buckman.
Here.
Ms. Guy.
Here.
Ms. Halsted.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Ms. Randall.
Here.
Ms. Sigmund.
Here.
Ms. Solomon.
Here.
And Dr. Warner.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any changes to the agenda? Okay, if there are none, please cast your vote. Tally the votes, motion passes 7-0. Moving on to our consent items, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, I have a motion and a second, are there any comments, questions, concerns? Okay, cast your votes. Tally the votes. That's a mistake, okay, 7-0, we're going with it. Okay, moving on to announcements of the administrative personnel appointments at this time.
That's me, Madam Chair.
That's you, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we're excited to announce a number of new administrators in Stafford County Public Schools tonight. And while I call your name, if you could please come forward to share a few remarks with the board, very excited about this very first person. She is a familiar face to the school board and to our school board meetings, and she's assuming a new role in our community. Dr. Rebecca Towery will be named the Executive Director of the University of Mary Washington Academy of Technology and Innovation. Dr. Towery will serve as the founding Executive Director of this school. It's a laboratory school that will be co-founded with the University of Mary Washington. Since 2019, Dr. Towery has served as the Director of what is now called the Department of Research Evaluation and Strategic Improvement, ensuring a rigorous research lens to our program evaluations, supporting procurement of substantial competitive grants for the school division, and acting as a critical leader for our strategic planning initiatives. Prior to this role, Dr. Towery was in the school division's Accountability Office as its specialist in program and led program evaluations. She also taught history and social studies in an alternative school setting for over a decade. Dr. Towery holds a Bachelor of Political Science from Virginia Tech, a Master's in Secondary Education from the University of Mary Washington, and her Doctorate in Educational Leadership and Policy from Vanderbilt University, and has earned her School Leadership Certificate from Lipscomb University. Congratulations, Dr. Towery, on this monumental position.
I want to thank you all for the opportunity for this. I am incredibly excited and I think it's, I think this just has tremendous potential to do some really amazing things for our students and also to support the development of our future educators. So very excited and thankful for the opportunity.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Towery. I'd be remiss if I also didn't point out that Dr. Towery was instrumental in securing the planning grant in conjunction with Stafford Schools and UMW as well, so she has an inside track on the work that she's going to be doing. Next up is Matthew Hills, who will serve as the Principal of Shirleyheim Middle School. And as Mr. Hills comes up, you can tell he's wearing the right colors for Shirleyheim, for sure. Mr. Hills has, for the last five years, served as a principal at Meridian High School in Falls Church. There, he supported the growth of Students International Baccalaureate Program and Computer Science Program. He's helped to establish a mental health curriculum for the entire school division in Falls Church City and spearheaded a capital campaign for the school's new rebuild. Mr. Hills was previously a high school assistant principal in both Charlottesville City and Falls Church City and a special education teacher in Fairfax County. He joins us from an innovative school setting in northern Virginia where he oversees the admissions and organizational development of an independent school. Mr. Hills earned his Bachelor's in Broadcast Journalism from East Carolina, Eastern, excuse me, East Carolina University, his Master's in Special Education from Marymount University, and his Administrative and Supervision Certificate from the University of Virginia. Congratulations, Mr. Hills, and welcome to Shirleyheim.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor, for the wonderful introduction. Thank you to the board for this incredible opportunity to serve the Shirleyheim community. At first, I'd like to start out by introducing my wife and the rock of the family, Muriel, Muriel Hills. Fellow educator in Fairfax County, so thank you for being here. I'd also like to thank my two children, Carson and Nia, who I hope aren't giving their grandparents any issues right now, fingers crossed. But thank you once again, an opportunity to meet with several of the staff members from Shirleyheim today, and I knew right away, this is the place for me. I'm looking forward to serving the community, to help students, to support them in every way possible, and once again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hills.
Congratulations.
So I got to give some points to Mr. Hills for pointing out his wife, Muriel, in the audience, and Dr. Towery, I forgot, Mr. Towery sitting next to you right over there, just want to make sure that he gets recognized as well for being a support of the new lab school. And thank you Shirleyheim team for coming this evening as well, we're glad that you guys could be here as well. Speaking of our Shirleyheim team, I would be remiss if we didn't give a huge, huge thank you to Cheryl Ritchie, who stepped up to be the interim principal of Shirleyheim Middle School. She was an assistant principal that we had appointed last year, and she's just, has been a huge help and just a stabilizing force in that school and just a dynamic leader, and we're just super proud of her. And we're so proud of her that she's also going to be appointed this evening into another role. So Cheryl Ritchie, if you could please come on up, yes, let's give her a big round of applause. Ms. Ritchie has been the interim principal at Shirleyheim since before winter break. She'll be transitioning into her new leadership role as the Assistant Director of Elementary Special Education as soon as the transition with Mr. Hills can take place. We're very excited for her to assume this new role. Ms. Ritchie joined us, as I mentioned, last year as an assistant principal at Heim after 15 years as being an assistant principal in Fairfax County at the middle and high school levels. In her prior roles, she led the school's literacy collaborative team to support schoolwide goals related to literacy growth amongst students. She's fostered the development of teacher leaders and improved the transition for English language learners at her school. Prior to becoming a building administrator, Ms. Ritchie served as a Special Education Department Chair and Team Lead at both the elementary and middle levels, and after eight years as a special education teacher, so a rich background in special education and a huge, huge addition to our team. Ms. Ritchie has earned her Bachelor's Degree from Penn State and her Master's Degree in Educational Leadership and Policy Studies from Virginia Tech. Welcome back to your school board meeting, Ms. Ritchie, thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank you for the opportunity. Since I started in Stafford County on July 1st, I feel lucky to have been embraced by this county. I absolutely love working here. I have enjoyed my time at Shirleyheim and I'm excited to always be a Timber Wolf. And I am very eager and excited to take on this next opportunity, supporting special education in our elementary schools and our goals as a whole. I love where we're moving in this county with special education and I'm excited to be a part of it and I'm ready. So, and also, congratulations to Mr. Hills. And my husband is not here tonight, but he would say I spend more time with my partner in crime, Ms. Andy Mara, and she is here, supporting us all tonight, so, thank you.
Next, we have Brittany Boccio. Ms. Boccio is the new assistant principal at Stafford High School. Let's give her a round of applause. For the last two years, Ms. Boccio has been a teacher on special assignment at Bull Run Middle School in Prince William County, adding to the school's administrative capacity with special education, leadership, student discipline, and instructional support. Prior to this special assignment, Ms. Boccio was an English Language Arts and Journalism teacher at the middle and high school levels. Ms. Boccio also brings her own unique experience as a career switcher, having worked in public relations and communications prior to becoming a teacher. Ms. Boccio earned her Bachelor of Science in Journalism and Bachelor of Arts from Ohio University, her Master's in Education from Marymount University, and her Educational Leadership Certificate through the James Madison University in Virginia. So, welcome, Ms. Boccio.
Thank you for having me, I'm so excited to be joining Stafford and Stafford High School, and I'm looking forward to supporting the administration team and the students and the teachers, and I just can't wait to get started. So thanks for having me and trusting me.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I should also thank my mom, she's here from Pittsburgh, and Patty Boccio.
All right, Mom, you have to stand up.
And my son, Jaden.
There you go, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. And also joining her this evening is members of the administrative team at Stafford High as well, so thank you.
I'm really, really enjoying that tie, young man, very nice. Mr. Diggs, take note.
Our last administrative appointment of this evening is Heather Wright. Heather Wright is a familiar face in Stafford County. She joins our team as a teacher on administrative assignment at Hartwood Elementary School. At the conclusion of this year, she will be the assistant principal at Hartwood Elementary School. And during her time prior to this, she has been working at Kate Waller Barrett Elementary School. So we're very fortunate to have her and her experience, so let's give her a round of applause, please. And Mrs. Wright has taught everything from first grade all the way up through fourth grade, and has done pretty much whatever the school needs. She has definitely learned from some outstanding leaders in the school division and has been a team leader, a professional learning lead, and has served the school division and the school as a recruiter and on a number of committees. Prior to joining Stafford, Ms. Wright taught first through third grade for a local private school and is the mother of two Stafford Schools graduates. Ms. Wright earned her Bachelor's in Family and Child Development from Virginia Tech, a Master's in Education from Mary Washington, and this May she will complete her Master's in Educational Leadership from George Mason University, at which point she will officially become the assistant principal at Hartwood Elementary School. Congratulations, Ms. Wright, welcome to the team.
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Taylor, I'm so thankful for this opportunity to be part of Team Hartwood. I am passionate about what we do as educators, as I know Team Hartwood is as well, so I'm very excited to be joining the Hartwood family. Speaking of family, I want to thank and introduce my husband Dwight, who is here with me tonight. He gets what we do and he's continuing to be a great support. So again, I want to thank you for this opportunity to serve Stafford County Public Schools in this capacity and to help Mr. Raska lead Team Hartwood. Thank you.
And I would be remiss if I didn't point out that Mr. Raska is also joining us this evening to support her new teammate. So, Madam Chair, this concludes our administrative appointments for this evening.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to awards and recognitions. At this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Sandra Osborne, our Chief Communications Officer in the Office of Communications.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Taylor. Annually, February is recognized as Black History Month. Accepting the school system proclamation this evening is Ms. Maya Guy, Acquire District Representative to the Stafford County School Board. A proclamation to recognize February 2023 as Black History Month, whereas in 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of black history throughout our American experience, and whereas the history of people of African heritage goes back thousands of years and includes some of the greatest, most advanced, and innovative societies in the history of human existence, and whereas African Americans have played a significant role in the history of the United States, from the early days of the pioneers to our present-day leaders in such industries as aerospace, finance, government, and international trade, and whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to reflect on the rich history and teaching of blacks whose contributions are vast and wide, and whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the rich history and teaching of African Americans and bear witness to the progress, beauty, and achievements they have made throughout our region. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Stafford County hereby designates the month of February 2023 as Black History Month throughout the school division. We encourage the celebration of the collective ingenuity, creativity, cultures, and traditions of African Americans and encourage participation in educational events honoring the contributions of black Americans. Adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 14th day of February 2023. Annually, February is recognized as Career and Technical Education Month. Accepting the proclamation tonight are Mr. Bobby Jett, instructor at Stafford High School, and Matthew Meyer, a Stafford High School senior who was one of Virginia's five nominees for the U.S. Presidential Scholars for Career and Technical Education. A proclamation to recognize February 2023 as Career and Technical Education Month, whereas each February has been nationally recognized as National Career and Technical Education Month since 2008, and whereas economic and technological changes in our society are rapidly reflected in our structure and the nation of today's workplace, placing new and additional responsibilities on our educational system, and whereas career and technical education are part of the foundation of a strong, well-educated, modern workforce that fosters productivity in business and industry and contributes to Virginia's leadership in the international marketplace, and whereas through career and technical education, students gain meaningful experience in practical applications of basic skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, and whereas adults can improve their lives with career and technical education by learning new skills that will provide them with more career choices, expanded earning potential, and greater job satisfaction, and whereas the cooperative and ever-increasing efforts between career and technical educators, administrators, and representatives of business and industry stimulate the growth and vitality of the new Virginia economy by preparing citizens for careers in high-demand, high-wage, technologically skilled areas in a global economy. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Stafford County hereby designates February 2023 as Career and Technical Education Month throughout the school division. Adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 10th day of January 2023. This evening, we will recognize staff and community members that epitomize our values of students, integrity, respect, community, opportunity, and excellence. Recently, nearly two dozen of our middle and high school students participated across noteworthy state and regional music events. Seventh through ninth grade students participated in a junior orchestra, while 10th through 12th grade students participated in a senior orchestra at the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association 2022 National Central, North Central Regional Orchestra. At this time, we would like to individually recognize these talented musicians. Audience, please hold your applause until the end. Students, when I call your name, please come forward. Students, when I call your name, please come forward. Aditya Bieswaz, Gabriella Cannon, Allison Casey, Caroline Davis, Jamie Johnson, Lindsay Lee, Zoe Lee, Alec Martin, Sophia Meter, Aiden Rom, Ren Snow, and Ning Zhao Zhang. Next, we will recognize the Virginia Band and Orchestra Director Association's 2022 All-Virginia Jazz Ensemble Participant. This ensemble performed at State Music Education Conference. When I call your name, please come back forward, Jamie Johnson. The Virginia Music Educators Association 2022 Honors Choir showcased talented and hard-working high school seniors who auditioned against hundreds of other high school seniors in the Commonwealth. Six Stafford students performed alongside 132 other students from across the state. When I call your name, please come forward. Daniel Confair, Marcus Dowd, Natalie Haynes, Emma Jones, Sarah Pendergraft, and Lydia Zambon. We recognize what an incredible honor it is for our school division to be represented in these events, and we are deeply inspired by your hard work and commitment as musicians. Thank you to your staff who prepared you for these, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, parents, for raising great kids. Appreciate you guys.
Stafford High School Assistant Principal Benjamin Diggs has been named the 2023 Outstanding Secondary School Assistant Principal of Virginia by the Virginia Association of Secondary School Principals. Mr. Diggs has served Stafford High School since 2020. He is a firm believer in working hard and doing whatever it takes to accomplish one's goals, modeling this daily through his interactions with students, assessments of teacher engagements, and his collaborative efforts with parents to maximize the academic success of every student. Mr. Diggs will be honored for his accomplishments at the June 2023 Virginia Middle and High School Principals Conference and Expo and recognized nationally at the 2023 Nationals Principals Conference in July. Thank you for embodying division values and principles on a daily basis. Stafford Schools is proud to have your dynamic leadership as part of our school community. Thank you and congratulations. School Resource Officers are an essential part of the support available for Stafford students. A key component of learning is a secure learning environment, and our SROs help us achieve this mission daily. We are incredibly grateful for their commitment to providing our students and staff with the highest degree of safety and security while occupying school premises. In addition to their tireless efforts to maintain safe learning spaces for all, our SROs provide vital, positive mentorship experiences. In recognition of their service, Governor Glenn Youngkin has declared February 15th as School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. This evening, we present First Art Torrance with a copy of the Certificate of Recognition for her leadership in overseeing this program. Certificate of Recognition. By virtue of the authority vested by the Constitution and the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. Whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia is dedicated to making schools safe for all students, faculty, staff, and the communities they serve. And whereas school resource officers are critical members of the educational community who dedicate their lives to keeping students and schools safe. And whereas most school divisions and law enforcement agencies throughout the Commonwealth have entered partnerships to ensure students have a safe place to learn and school personnel are safe to work. And whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia has one of the longest-running, most robust School Resource Officers Program in the nation. And where there are more than 800 exceptionally-trained, dedicated men and women in law enforcement who serve as School Resource Officers in our elementary, middle, and high schools, providing support and encouragement and serving as role models, law enforcement officers, and educators. Now therefore, I, Glenn Youngkin, do hereby recognize February 15th, 2023, as School Resource Officer Appreciation Day in the Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of our citizens. Thank you. Annually, the second week in February is designated as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week by the Virginia School Boards Association. Accepting the proclamation this evening are Missy Hall and Angie Mergo, Clerk and Alternate Clerk to the School Board. A proclamation to recognize February 13th through 17th, 2023, as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. Whereas School Board Clerks in each locality throughout our great Commonwealth are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities. And whereas School Board Clerks are responsible for keeping accurate records of the meetings and proceedings of the School Board, a record of all recipients and dispersments, and a record of all official acts. And whereas School Board Clerks perform such other duties in connection with the school business of the county as may be required by the School Board. And whereas School Board Clerks maintain frequent contact with the public on behalf of the School Board and Superintendent, including parents, employees, county administration, staff, officials, and members of the public. And whereas School Board Clerks in performance of their duties are often required to work extra hours attending School Board meetings and functions. And whereas School Board Clerks join with the School Board members and school staff to support students and families to ensure that students achieve their highest potential. And whereas School Board Clerks provide an invaluable service for School Board members and superintendents. And whereas the Stafford County School Board extends its gratitude to our Clerk, Ms. Missy Hall, and Deputy Clerk, Ms. Angela Mergo, for their dedicated service to our school division and recognize their numerous contributions to Stafford County Public Schools. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Stafford County hereby recognizes the week of February 13th through 17th, 2023, as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week and encourages the public and employees of Stafford County Public Schools to acknowledge the great work and dedicated service of our Clerk and Deputy Clerk for the Board members, school division staff, and students, and parents and citizens of Stafford County. Adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 10th day of January 2023. Annually, the month of February is recognized nationally as School Board Appreciation Month. Accepting the proclamation are Ms. Susan Randall, Ms. Patricia Healy, Ms. Maya Guy, Dr. Sarah Chase, Ms. Maureen Sigman, Dr. Elizabeth Warner, Ms. Eliza Halsted, Ms. Catherine Buckman, and Ms. Maraki Solomon. A proclamation to recognize February 2023 as School Board Appreciation Month. Whereas the education of Virginia's school-aged children is the foundation upon which the economic, social, and intellectual capital of our Commonwealth is built. And whereas duly-elected and appointed school boards play an important and vital role in a constitutional republic, and decisions made by local boards of education directly influence instruction in Virginia public schools. And whereas these decisions affect the present and future lives of children and also set direction to prepare all students to be competitive in a local, state, national, and global 21st century knowledge economy. And whereas local school board members work with parents, education professionals, local businesses, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students. And whereas this year's theme, Rising to the Challenge, reflects the leadership of local school board members as they serve their local divisions and advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all students. And whereas School Board Appreciation Month provides an opportunity to celebrate Virginia's school board members who champion the mission of public education. And whereas the staff and students of Stafford County Public Schools recognize the contribution of the school board to the academic success of our public school students and expresses their sincerest recognition to the board members for their focus on the well-being and achievement of children throughout the county. Now therefore be it proclaimed by Superintendent Dr. Thomas W. Taylor that February 2023 will be recognized as School Board Appreciation Month throughout the school division. Dr. Taylor encourages the Stafford community to celebrate our dedicated school board members. Signed on this 14th day of February 2023. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Next up on our agenda is the Student Representative Report. Ms. Buckman, do you have something for us?
Hello, everyone. So, I'd first like to start off by saying thank you so much, Dr. Taylor, the board. I really appreciate this opportunity to speak on behalf of myself, Maraki, my amazing fellow student representative, and all of the students of Stafford County. So, it's looking, just based off the agenda, to be a bit of an extensive meeting. So, for everyone's sake, I'll try and keep this as short as possible. So, today, I'd like to focus mostly on the things Maraki and I have been working on over the past month and the student response we've received from the actions we've taken. So, as student representatives, one of our main objectives is to bridge the unfortunate but natural divide that exists between the students of Stafford County and the adults and the decision-makers. So, after much discussion, we've determined that communication plays a major role in this. So, we're very excited to introduce several things that we hope will open the channels of communication between the students of Stafford County and the board members here. So, first, Maraki and I are very, very excited to announce that to better communicate the decisions and processes of the board with the students of Stafford County, we will be creating a blog and a newsletter that will be linked through the official SCPS website. So, we are currently in the logistical phase of this, so we're currently working out the details. But as it is, we're looking to post updates on these platforms roughly once a month with the items Maraki and I have been working on, in addition to the discussions and the debates that have been occurring at these board meetings, with the goal of promoting accessibility to all of the students in Stafford County. So, additionally, on the other end of this spectrum, communication goes both ways. So, we're really eager to serve as vessels for the student voice. That's one of the main pillars of our jobs as student representatives. So, currently, we're looking into long-term solutions to reach elementary, middle, and high school students. But to gain a preliminary understanding of the students' voices, just initially, Maraki and I looked to create a Google form, which we sent out to leadership from, I believe it was class and SCA leadership in high schools across the county. So, this ended up totaling about 130 students that we were able to reach out to. About, we got about 30 responses from this, but they're all very diverse, different grade levels across the county, different schools, which is absolutely essential as we're looking to promote diversity in the student perspective. So, the responses we received, and it was an extensive forum, so it's a bit difficult for me to condense this all into this single report. So, if you're interested in hearing more about this, please feel free to ask, and I'd be more than happy to share it with you. So, all of the responses we received were very insightful. So, what the students want. From this Google form, we look to understand the basics of the students' wants, needs, and concerns. Those were our three main things that we wish to ascertain. So, we asked a series of questions. So, from the FRQ section, the Free Response Question, a majority of students highlighted violence and drug use, drug use specifically vaping, as their biggest concerns in the school. So, I know Ms. Halsted and I, we've been working to reach the students about this issue in particular. So, many of the students identified that our lunch as one of their favorite aspects of our current school system. However, they traced violence and drug use back to this. For the most part, though, they recommended further disciplinary action to remedy this problem. So, I know Brookpoint has recently taken away the hour lunch. Whether that's a good decision or not will be determined. So, the FRQ section, it was helpful in gaining a broader sense of the student perspective, but there was so much variation that it was difficult to come to a consensus as to the biggest problems the students believe we are facing and the most pressing solutions. So, Maraki and I worked together. So, we identified several of the biggest issues we could think of, and we asked students to decide which they thought to be the most pressing. So, we had a ranked list, and we asked students to choose the three top ones that they thought to be the most important, most concerning in our current school system. So, I'll list them out really quickly here, but we determined that mental health, suicide prevention, drug and alcohol use, violence, population growth slash class size, nutrition and school lunches, technology and social media, bullying and parent involvement to be some of the top concerns in our school system. And so, we reached out to the students, and we asked them, hey, which do you think to be the most pressing? So, of the students who responded, 69.2% identified drug and alcohol use to be the most pressing concern in our school system. And from that Free Response section, we were able to determine that when students refer to drug use and alcohol use, I think they're primarily referring to vaping. And then 65.4% identified mental health as their second most pressing concern, and then 57.7% identified violence to be their top or their third most concern. So, we feel very grateful to the students who responded. In the future, we're looking to identify some more long-term solutions to reach out beyond just high school students and just leadership and high school students. So, we've talked to elementary schools about potential for drop boxes, Google forms. We're looking to determine students' level of access to technology to determine which methods of communication will be most available. So, those are things that we'll be looking and working towards in the future to bridge the communication gap. So, this essentially concludes my report. So, I was really eager to communicate the things that Maraki and I have been working on, as well as our future goals. So, I know I mentioned earlier that it was really difficult to condense the results of our Google form into just this simple report. So, if you're interested in hearing more, some students were really great, and they were whole essays for us. So, if you're interested in hearing those, please reach out, and I'd be more than happy to share the form with you. But thank you so much. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you so much. You know, I would ask that, if possible, if you could have it sent to Missy, Ms. Hall, so that she can send it out to the whole board?
Sure, I'd be, yeah, that works perfectly.
Because I think a number of us would like to see what
Okay, definitely.
What the students are saying and what you found and questions asked. So, if you wouldn't mind sending it to Mrs. Hall, and she can send it out to the board.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, so there's an ask, can you clarify parental involvement?
Sure. So, I think it was mostly parental involvement in the school system, reaching out to teachers. I think essentially interference, parental interference was kind of the, yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's move along. We're going to open up now for our public hearing on the proposed FY24 budget. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of their comments to the board clerk. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents the organization. represents the organization. Speakers shall limit their comments to the topic of the FY24 budget. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairperson. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against the division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in SEPS Policy 1113, Public Complaints. Ms. Hall, do we have any?
Yes, Madam Chair, you have four people signed up. They are Michelle Wickman, Brene Howell, Sarah Taylor, and Diane Clavino.
Okay. If you would like to line up on my left, your right side, Ms. Wickman, would you like to come up and speak first for us, please? Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Taylor, my name is Michelle Wickman. I live in Hampton Oaks. I've got two kids in Stafford schools. I teach at North Stafford, and I'm also SCA Secretary. SCA conducted a member priorities survey in the fall, and participants ranked their two highest priorities as continued efforts to remove from rather than add to educators' plates, and continued compression and upward adjustment of the teacher salary scale. Since your top budget priority is to attract and retain high-quality staff, it seems that we're in alignment. Last year's salary increase was a great starting point, and we really appreciate the efforts made. We conducted a budget survey with SCA members last week that didn't have a huge response rate due to the quick turnaround. However, 70% of those 145 participants are in support of this budget, and they said they're grateful that compensation is a priority. Those that did not support the budget in our survey, they commented that it seems more could be done, and personally, I agree. Ironically, I'm in an advanced leadership course right now, and we just finished the budget module. And the main thing that was stressed during that module is that you shouldn't construct your budget in ways that would detrimentally impact your strategic plan. Now, the line items that Dr. Taylor identified that should have been included in the initial proposal but weren't are directly related to the division's strategic goals. Not having supplements for our hard-to-staff positions, competitive pay for paras, or fully-funded staffing standards will negatively impact your ability to meet goal number four and its objectives. Essentially, using a credit card for our maintenance needs every year is really inefficient, so we need those pay-go funds to achieve goal number three, objective six. And without differentiated site allocations, it will be difficult to meet any strategic plan objectives, because we have students and staff in buildings that need a different level of support. If these things are not even included in the proposal, what on earth will you cut if the funding request isn't fully approved? The budget as proposed is still one of the best we've seen in recent years, and we really appreciate that. But that being said, knowing that Stafford is in the bottom 15% of school divisions in Virginia for per pupil expenditures, shouldn't we be asking for every penny we can? For the most part, where we're at now is due to decisions made by people other than yourselves. So I ask you, what kind of legacy do you want to leave? Do you want future boards to be doing what you're doing now, trying to secure funding for things that should have been funded years ago? Your effort with the budget and the CIP, tell me that's not the case. I urge you to approve a budget that accurately reflects the needs of our staff and students and supports the strategic plan as much as possible. If funding isn't approved and you have to make cuts, well, that's a problem for future you, and it isn't your control anyway. If you don't ask, the answer is always no. Please continue to make choices that pave the way for progress, and send a funding request across the street that does a lot more than keep the lights on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hello, I am Brene Howell from the Garrisonville District, and I cannot believe I'm here right now. So I just wanted to, like, talk to you guys today, offer you a different perspective of things. I work at North Stafford, and I've just noticed a lot of things. And the main thing that I noticed was just, like, all of the issues that we face every single day. I think we have great admin, I think we have great teachers, but it all comes down to money. Whenever I talk to them, it all comes down to money. And the budgeting thing, that has nothing to do with me. I did not go to school for this, so I trust that you guys will do what you need to do. I'm just here to offer my perspective. And so as I was here, I was thinking, like, oh my goodness, I can't believe that this is what this is. So anyways, the mission is to inspire and empower every student, and I do my best, and a lot of people do their best to do so. But at the same time, I feel like one of the things working at North Stafford, the kids feel under-supported. Like, you can tell the difference from North Stafford. I know it's an older school versus, like, you know, some of the younger schools that we have. And the kids notice that, they feel that, and when I have conversations with them, they're just like, well, they don't like us, they don't care about us. And how do I argue that when, like, the school that we work in kind of shows that it gives it that negative narrative? So my perspective, I'm coming from, like I said, when I think about all of the problems that are occurring in our schools, the root is lack of funding. Recently, I submitted a question regarding where the number comes from for the cheer stipend, because a coach left, and I filled in the gap, and I did not realize what I was signing on for. And my question was, where does the number come from, from the stipend? I'm aware that is not the only sport, but I do believe that is the one that's inadequately compensated compared to other coaching staff. When I stumbled upon the stipends for the sports, and I was honestly so disappointed. Like, to look at the football stipend, cheer is literally half of the football stipend. Where did that number come from? Is it coincidental? I don't think that that's fair. I feel like, to me, it just looks like you guys saw, like, okay, I'm just going to give them half, not even considering the amount of work that is, like, put in. I did not even know how much work a cheer coach had to put in. And to me, that was insane. And honestly, I don't know if I'm able to be a cheer coach next year, and, I mean, I have to do what's best for me at the end of the day. But I do believe that the person who comes after me should be compensated for their time, because they do a lot. And I don't know if I'm biased, but I feel like they may do the most, not to discredit any other sports. But like, we're there, you guys want us to show up to everything, and guess who has to come? The coach. So I just would like you guys to look into that, because, like, cheer is school spirit. We need the spirit. We want to encourage our students. So I feel like if you guys want to take a look at that, please, that would be greatly appreciated. I know that's, is that my timer? Okay, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Yes, thank you for sharing. Okay, next speaker.
Sarah Taylor, Falmouth District resident and teacher at North Stafford High School. They say that love is priceless, but it's kind of nifty that on this day, Valentine's Day, the day when we celebrate love, I'm actually able to calculate the dollar value of my love for Stafford County Public Schools. And that's $27,517. Thanks to Dr. Taylor's chart, I know that I'd make $27,517 more if I taught at a Prince William High School next year than I will make at my current job at North Stafford. 12 years ago, when I had to move closer to family in Stafford, I got offers from both Stafford and Prince William. At Step 9, Prince William was about $8,000 more per year, but I had to weigh that against the cost of the commute, daycare, having different holidays, and my young children, et cetera. And I made the right decision to accept the position in Stafford. Now, 12 years later, with my kids grown and me going on Step 21, if Stafford's school board passes the superintendent's proposed budget, and if Stafford's Board of Supervisors passes a tax rate that will fund the budget, then I get to look forward to making $27,517 less than a comparably experienced teacher in Prince William County next year. So why then will I stay? When it means foregoing a salary differential that's the same as the cost of a brand-new car every year? Besides the fact that I'd lose some of my steps if I jumped ship, I stay because I really do love Stafford County Public Schools. I love my students, my school, my coworkers, my curriculum. And yes, I also do love the familiarity and the respect I get as a veteran. But I can't say it doesn't sting. On our proposed salary scale, I could spend another 21 years here and never break six figures. I would have reached that milestone this year in Prince William. Ouch. So I really hope you'll approve Dr. Taylor's budget proposal, and I really hope you'll fight hard to get the supervisors to pass a tax rate that'll fund it, and I'll help. But it's not enough. It's just not enough if we want to keep the experienced teachers in Stafford. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Diane Clavino. I am a resident of the Falmouth District and also a teacher at North Stafford High School. I had this shirt made after the convocation this summer. Amish Brewers' words were a revelation to me. Save yourself, nobody is coming to save you. As a special education teacher, one of my biggest goals for my students is self-advocacy. Did you ask your teacher for help? I want them to be able to go out in the world and ask for the help they need. When my students struggle, I want them to reach out. Well, Mr. Brewer's words resonated with me, because upon reflection, I realized I'm not walking the walk. There are a lot of times when I don't follow my own advice and ask for what I need. His presentation made me realize that I can't wait around, and we can't wait around for someone else to save us if we don't reach out to help ourselves. So I would like the school board to request the funds to meet all the discretionary and non-discretionary needs listed in the superintendent's presentation. The school board's budgets priorities tied to elevate Stafford's five-year strategic plan include the following: attract and retain high-quality staff. I want all the best teachers, the quality teachers, to come to Stafford and stay. There's a teacher shortage right now. They have choices. Quality teachers, the good teachers, have choices. I want them on our team. I want them to come here. We can support that through compensation. The pay scale adjustment has been a big help, but also primarily through the staffing standards. Fully implemented would make a big goal in this direction. To know that we are not going to be stretched too thin. We are not going to be asked to cover extra classes, or take extra blocks, or carry caseloads over the state recommendations. If we know that the district is willing to invest in the number of quality staff we need to do our jobs, that also says a lot for the quality of education kids will get. So your actions requesting implementation and contributions will show all stakeholders, parents, students, citizens, current and future employees, that Stafford County is serious about maintaining a high-quality school system.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's the conclusion of the citizen comments.
Okay. So we're closing the public hearing, and we're opening up to citizen comments. Ms. Hall?
Yes, ma'am. We have two people signed up. The first is Benjamin McCauley Lang, and then Shannon Fingerholtz.
Is the first speaker here?
Benjamin McCauley Lang.
Okay. Come on. Come on, Shannon.
It's been a while since I've talked to you from this side. Shannon, it was really echoing. Shannon Fingerholtz, Hartwood District. So it's Valentine's Day, so I wanted to share a little love for Rocky Run. That's my daughter's school. So Nurse Kaylee and Kate in the office probably saved, I don't know, several inches of my daughter's hair. Sometimes we forget all of the things that the teachers and the staff do for our children as they're co-raising them into good little human beings and adults. Someone squished by accident some slime in her hair, really, like, in there, and they spent half an hour getting it out. So she came home with no slime, which was great, because if it had been at my house, it would have been just cut. Yep, exactly. So just the love and attention, they're like, oh, no, it would have been a lot of hair. And I was like, it's okay, it's been fine. But they love our children like they're own. They spend so much time with them. And so I just really want to appreciate that. And then also, not so funny, my daughter thinks she's Buddy the Elf and likes to eat random things. You know, like, you see, like, the gum, oh, I want to grab it. She usually doesn't get to it, but some kid popped over to her at the bus stop and handed her something, and it was about the size of a pill. I wasn't at the bus stop, another parent was. She popped it in her mouth and made a bad face. And so the parent called and said, hey, your child ate something? I'm not sure what it was. And so I called the school, and I was like, hey, just to let you know, my kid ate something, not sure what it was, if she starts freaking out, you know? They did not hesitate. They immediately put me on hold, immediately pulled her out of class, and explained to her that she's not Buddy the Elf, and found out that it was a coffee bean. But in the end, it was fine. But the fact that they took my concern very seriously and very quickly just shows how much they all love our children. So I just wanted to say thanks back, because it's both, again, Kate and Nurse Kaylee. They are my little team duo, on my kid, apparently. But thank you, and thank you for all that you guys do. And Missy, you are amazing. So thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'm closing public comment, and we're going to action items. Action item 9.01, approval of the purchase of security cameras for installation on 85 school buses at a total cost not to exceed $325,000. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions?
Madam Chairman, I just want to note that a significant portion of this cost is coming from grant funds, and I want to commend the superintendent and staff for securing those grant funds to help meet a need for Stafford County Public Schools. And we're going to be contributing 25% of the cost, while 75% is coming from a grant.
That is good. Very much, thank you. Are there any other questions?
I'm just super happy, because we've been trying to get this for years. We were closed at one point years ago, and I don't know what happened, and we were so disappointed. So I'm super excited.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Action item 9.02, adoption of proposed amendments to Policies 1106, 2103, 4501, 7101, 7202, 7204, 7205, and 7206, and review of Policy 7203. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve all except I would like to divide 2103 out.
Okay. So motion to approve and pull out 2103 as a second approval, okay? Thank you. Are there any comments? Ms. Healy?
I just have a question. Is 2103, are we going to vote on that separately?
Yes.
And discuss it? Okay.
And I just want to point out that 1106, which refers to the actual professional development for the board members, we had discussed this at the retreat, and in putting sort of a limitation on how much we would spend per board member at one time, or, you know, kind of looking at the return on the investment. So governance has looked at this a few times since then. And just this past meeting, we have talked about, you know, anything you want to attend on your own, clearly, we don't need to approve that, but if you're looking, well, maybe not you, but if you're, I don't want to forget her. But if you're looking to go anywhere over 600, then we'd like to bring that to all of us. So that's kind of new language that's in here, but the conceptualizations aren't new, just so we can hear where you're going, what it would bring. Maybe somebody else would like to tack on to that and go, too, you found maybe a conference that is interesting to us. So that's the only real big change in here. But this is the one we talked about at the retreat.
Yes.
So this is not approval to go, this is just to let everybody know?
If it goes over 600, it would be a board decision.
Yeah.
Okay. That just sounds like extra, potentially extra work, but okay.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay. Cast your vote. And this is for all policies except 2103. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Adoption of proposed amendment to Policies 2103. Do I have a motion?
Motion to, I'm sorry, motion to approve 2103.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a first and a second. Are there any comments? I'll start with Dr. Chase.
So, I guess what I'm confused about is, is this policy saying that, let's say, I transfer to a school to be in the IB program or CGS, and then halfway through, I decide that I'm not going to continue with that program? Would I then be allowed to stay at that school, requiring the school system to provide transportation?
So, no. If you, your programmatic attendance at a school that's not your zone school means that you would return to your zone school.
Well, the way the wording is on this thing is it says, "Proposed revision, allow a student in good standing and with the principal's approval to remain in a school where they have completed fifty percent or more of their schooling." So, if they've gone to, let's say, transferred to Colonial Forge or transferred to Mountain View, and they've done two years of the program, that's fifty percent. And so, this language says they would be allowed to stay, doesn't it?
You have to look at item four as well. Because that adds failure to continue enrollment in a specialty program as a reason to revoke a transfer. So hypothetically, a principal may say, "Well, we have room in the school, so, you know, we'll allow this," but, you know, for whatever reason, they could revoke the transfer, but that would be discretionary.
I guess I have an issue with our paying for transportation, and we're leaving it up to the principal to make the decision rather than having an actual policy.
Yeah, so, we wouldn't do that. If you're out of a program, we would have you return to your home school, and that's what provision four tries to capture.
But what Ms. Healy just-
I would respectfully interpret that differently. So, if that is the intent, then it needs to be clarified here. Because I read that as it's a reason to revoke a transfer, but it doesn't say that the transfer shall be revoked in that instance. But I would like to have some flexibility there, because I think there are some instances where if there's room in the school, rather than send someone back to another school that may be overcrowded, or, you know, if there may be certain circumstances that they decided not to go forward with the program, I would really like to have some flexibility there to allow them to stay in the school. So, I'm in favor of the language here, but it does say that the principal would have that authority to revoke the approval.
So, if I can, I'm sorry, Dr. Chase. So, Ms. Healy, I read it the way Dr. Chase reads it, that the transfers, well, I read it as the transfers are revoked if you stopped your program of choice, a specific program. So, if you're not going to the school for your originally intended reason, then you are not going to that school any further. So, you have to stay enrolled in that program continually throughout the course of your high school, or you go back to your home school zoned, your zoned home school. That's how I read it.
So, clearly it needs some clarification. If we are reading it differently-
Yeah.
Then certainly the principals are going to have an issue with that. But perhaps the issue for the board to discuss is what is the, will the board with respect to this?
So, Madam Chair, on page three, at the bottom of page three, item number four, it says, "Transfer shall be revoked if the reason for the transfer that was approved is no longer valid, including but not limited to being continually enrolled in a specialty program." So, I feel like we are covered.
Then the explanation is incorrect. Ambiguous at best, but probably incorrect. You look at number four.
Hang on a second, hang on a second. So, Ms. Healy, what would you like?
Well, let me look, I was looking at the explanation.
You've got two number fours, one on number, page two, and then one on page three.
I'm looking at the agenda where it has the synopsis.
Okay.
Because if it adds it as a reason to revoke, that doesn't necessarily say that it shall be revoked. But if the policy says it shall be revoked, then it's different.
And again, you've got two items there that are connected but not. So, it's actually in the written policy. I think it's written correctly.
So, wouldn't that be a conflict with number five?
So, you've got reasons for transfer, number four, which is what we were connected to, and then you've got reasons, conditions for transfer, which would be potentially reasons to not have the transfer. I will say that under our present conditions, transfers are limited because of the eighty-five percent of program capacity kind of cap that we have in place right now. So, it might be a few years before this problem actually surfaces, but, because we do have some limitations for that right now. But I believe that the point that Dr. Chase was trying to clarify is illuminated by the second number four, the one on page three, not the one on page two. And what the point that you were trying to make, Ms. Healy, which I believe is also correct, was illuminated by number four on page two, not page three.
I think there's an ambiguity, and that needs to be cleared. I think, I would agree with Dr. Chase. I think there's an ambiguity that's inherent, that if the principal can allow someone who has completed fifty percent and, except for these cases, but it doesn't say that. So, in one place, you say the principal has the authority, if they've been there more than fifty percent, and somewhere else, you say it shall be revoked.
So, could we have this go back to governance to get it clarified?
Can I ask for clarification on your clarification? So, just to make sure that I'm following the discussion correctly. So, we're talking about in the first one, because it does say to allow a student in good standing, and not that if you dropped your program of study, you wouldn't be in good standing, but we're talking about the fact that these two sort of conflict with each other. I have it as number five is the one with principal approval. And then number four is the one that says, "Will be revoked if you drop your program of study." So, am I correct in saying we want to tweak, that we want to look at those two paragraphs and tweak them? Okay, that's fine.
But I think we still have the issue of what is it the board wants for you to do?
Yeah.
And I guess the thing I have a concern about, and I could be correct or incorrect about this, but that the IB program doesn't really start until your junior year. So, if you go to Mountain View for the first two years, you've done sort of pre-IB, but you haven't really been in an IB, and then you decide you don't want to be in IB, but you've done fifty percent of your education at the school, then if the principal says, "Sure, that's fine with me if you stay," then we're providing transportation for that student, but they're not actually in the program. And so, I have concerns about that.
Why can't it just say something as plain as, "To allow a student in good standing who is currently enrolled but not in a specialty program?" And then that doesn't, then that, isn't that making it clear for the principal to not deviate from the specialty program thingamajiggin that we're talking about?
Districted too, but not in a specialty program, because there, I mean, there are going to be opportunities where a student is supposed to attend Mountain View and also makes the choice to not, you know?
If you put the specialty program thing right in there-
Mike. Mike, Maya.
I said, if you put the specialty program wording right in there at number five, then that answers the question of the principal, you know, maybe going against policy unknowingly or because they can't remember every little policy, right? So, just put it in there in plain stating.
And am I correct, this would still allow the superintendent to make exceptions? I know the superintendent is allowed to make exceptions for students being able to stay in a school even though they've moved to a different district for the rest of the year or something like that. So, the superintendent, we'd still have flexibility with respect to the superintendent rather than at the level of the principal. Would that, Ms. Healy, would that handle your concerns about flexibility?
I want to see where that is in here, because if we say, and I agree, if the intent is to make it an exception, then number, let's see where we are. Number five, in the first part, should say, "With the exception of transfer students as stated in paragraph four, you know, in the other section below, with principal approval, they can allow it." But where in here does it say that the superintendent? Because if that's the intent-
It doesn't, she's saying add.
It needs to say it. If this is the policy, we need to be clear. Because if it's not clear to us, it's really going to be difficult for the principals to implement this.
Ms. Halsted?
So, I guess I want to clarify what we're, I mean, to go back to what Dr. Chase was saying about, like, we have some folks that don't start their program until a couple of years in, but they have to start at that school if they've been accepted because they get programmed, they get their time in. So, what would be, what would be the problem with them continuing at that school if we've already been transporting them there?
Because it's a specialty program, and we're going right in there that you can't do that.
No, no, I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is that, I mean, it's potentially motivation to stay in your program and stay on your track or whatever. But we also have kids that have things that come up in their lives, maybe their intention is to continue, but they can't because of one reason or another, and that doesn't mean maybe necessary, and I'm not trying, we all know I'm not trying to be a softie, but, I mean, on a case-by-case basis, I guess my concern now is, I don't want to take any opportunity to discuss a transfer away from any level. Do you know what I'm saying? Or by keeping it open?
Because sometimes people change their specialty or apply to a specialty program to get to change where their child goes to school or where that child goes to school. And their child can get in, and then they're like, "Oh." It is.
Right. But Dr. Chase, is your concern the transportation?
And then, if we let them stay, we're also committing to transporting a kid from this way to that way, and the principal's then making a financial decision that we have to pay.
Yeah, my concern, I'm also in agreement with Ms. Segmond. I mean, I'm concerned about both. I mean, there's, you know, we like to think that everybody is doing things for the reason they say, but there are people who want their child to be on a particular field hockey team or on a particular band, and they use a specialty program as the way in, and it's really not appropriate.
I agree. Okay. Thank you for saying.
So, let's just go ahead and we can take this back to governance, and since Ms. Halsted, you're in charge of governance, do you have the information you need to help with the language when we come back to me? Okay.
Can I ask a question for the government?
Yes, Ms. Healy.
This says who's completed fifty percent of their schooling at a school. So hypothetically, if a sophomore comes in, transfers into the program and is in the IB program, and then they, they're not there fifty percent, they'd only be there twenty-five percent of their schooling if it's at that school, or is this intended to aim for juniors? Is that fifty, because fifty percent at a school means you would have been there fifty percent of your four years. So, that in effect is a disadvantage to people coming in, and we do have a high military population in our county that transfer in, and IB is a good example because a lot of those students may want to be in the IB program. So, we may want to look at that as well if it's not an issue for the board.
I think part of our partnership, particularly with military transfers, is to accommodate those families and those programs. I know with, you know, students who are coming in, we have a more streamlined process for, like, gifted services if they've received gifted services in another county. So, I anticipate that that would fall under, like, the superintendent's, you know, magic button or whatever, whatever his magic wand can do.
That was easy.
And that, yeah, the easy button.
Yeah, I think the intent of this generally is to put the decision-making at the principal level. That's the intent, and I think we can accommodate that intent in trying to remove some of the potential roadblocks or landmines that, you know, that may come up to make it simpler for the principal.
I agree.
Okay, so, since this item is up for action and we have a first and a second, if there's no more comments, I'm just going to ask everyone to go ahead.
Do we want to?
Do we want to remove it? I was going to say, or vote it down?
Well, we had, did we have a motion?
Yes.
And the motion was, what, to approve? So, we need a substitute motion. Dr. Chase?
Could I make a substitute motion that we send this policy back to governance and ask them to edit it and bring it back to, revise it?
So, to table to a time? Okay.
To a time uncertain.
So, now we have a substitute motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, got a substitute motion and a second. Are there any questions? Okay, cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes seven to zero. We'll send this back to governance. Okay, presentations, ten point oh one, mid-year operating fund financial report for FY twenty-three. Hello, Mr. Fulmer.
Good evening. Good to see you again.
Happy Valentine's Day.
All right, so, amidst all of our budget discussions for FY twenty-four, we're going to kind of come back into this current year, which is FY twenty-three. So, we're a little bit past our mid-year point of our fiscal year now. So, December thirty-one would be our midpoint, but we have to do some closing of that to actually get good numbers for December thirty-one, so it pushes us into January. So, February is where I can present some good information to the board. I did present this to the Fab C last week and had some good discussion there. Going to touch on just some enrollment numbers, how it impacts our ADM, state revenue, and then look at our operating fund, our revenue and our expenditures, and then a little bit touch on some of our other funds as well. So, as you know, Mr. White's projections for actual enrollment were pretty darn close this year, within seven students. But as you also know, as we continue to grow, so it doesn't really impact that December thirty-one number, and I came all the way through January thirty-one, but it's always a topic of growth in Stafford. Just wanted to point out that we have added, you know, over two-hundred-and-fifty kids since September thirtieth. ADM was budgeted at thirty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-six by the state. We're actually exceeding that with thirty-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-three, so almost a hundred students over that. And that increase in students and increase in ADM results in additional state revenue. So, in December, the state calc tool came out. We were looking at an increase in FY twenty-three of two-point-six million dollars. You know, a few weeks or so after that, we got the memo at the end of January stating that it wasn't going to be two-point-six, it was actually only one-point-one million-dollar increase to account for that growth, and that was due to that calc calculation error at the state level. That also impacted FY twenty-four. I put that on there, but it really does not impact this mid-year update. So, we are going to see an increase in our state revenue, but not quite what we were expecting when we first got the information in December. So, just high level, just kind of showing you, this is not new as well, but just showing you where our revenue splits are, so predominantly state between our state funding, which is fifty, also if you add in the sales taxes, which where we get to our typical state total of about sixty, county transfers thirty-eight, and then we have some other smaller buckets. Revenue from the state, as I mentioned, currently projected over budget of about one-point-one. Our other local funds probably going to come up a little short, and that comes from rebates, for like expenditure rebates that we get, some smaller bucket items, but overall, looking at about eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars increase in what we had originally budgeted in revenue. Now, if we get the whole harmless clause, which is being discussed at the Senate and the House level of the General Assembly, we could see as much of a two-point-three-five million-dollar increase over the original budget. And both of those numbers are important as we discuss some of our expenditure lines. As you know, a large chunk of our budget is compensation, so eighty-five to eighty-six percent is always in that range of our total comp and benefits, our non-comp fourteen percent. And the reason I point that out is because when we see increases in our comp lines that are unexpected, which I alluded to a little bit in our FY twenty-four work session, budget work session today, it can cause some concern and things that we need to watch in the current year as well. So, wanting to point out that on our expenditure side, because of accruals and when people are paid ten months over twelve months, we don't actually expend all of our money, you know, half of our payroll is not from July one to December thirty-one, so we've actually only expended about forty-five percent of that comp and benefit budget, even though we're halfway through the year. One of the items on the non-comp side that we added money for this year and that we have been tracking closely, that we saw increases in over was originally budgeted, was our fuel costs. So, this is just a heads up that we're actually doing really well on fuel, and by really well, we're just tracking spot on. We're not going to save money, but I don't expect an overage there either. We're going to come right in at about our two-point-four-five million-dollar budget for fuel. I put on here, and actually, Ms. Healy, you were asking about kind of how we budgeted our fuel and what those prices were, so this shows you kind of historically what our average fuel price has been each month for our regular and our diesel. I'd like to point out that just because regular prices fall does not mean that our diesel prices are falling. Those are not always a direct relationship. Also, this slide mirrors kind of what we talked about in the work session as well, as far as what we're seeing as the shift of some of the work that we did- as far as what we're seeing as the shift of some of the work that we did in our FY twenty-three budget last year to our teacher scale, our licensed scale. So put a lot of emphasis on the midpoint of our scale, you know, between that five and twenty, five and twenty-five. And it paid immediate benefits and rewards. We're still, for the first time in five years, are actually seeing an increase in the average years of experience for our teachers. So phenomenal that we have more experienced staff in our, in our schools, and we're seeing a, when I say a drop in our, our lower level teachers. We were seeing a bigger jump in our zero to five range over the last five years, and for the first time, we're actually seeing that shift back to the middle. And so that can be that we're, our, our licensed scale employees that are leaving us, because we're still seeing some of that turnover, although we saw some benefits there, but dropped to about fifteen percent compared to the eighteen percent that we saw the previous year. The ones that are leaving are not our mid tiers, and then when we replace them, we're getting more experienced teachers. So really proud of that, that we're, we're putting a better product in the classroom. But that also comes at a cost, because now we're paying more for that. So what that cost comes to, on the, actually, the, the third line down here for compensation and benefits on the left is two point three. So actually projecting to be two point three million dollars over on our total comp and benefit lines. Now, one point two of that is on our health insurance lines. But since we have such a healthy reserve in our health benefits fund, I'm actually not planning on transferring all that money from our operating fund over to our health benefits fund. So our health benefits fund, which I'll show you, is actually trending very well even for this year without having to tap into the reserve. So don't expect that we're going to need to transfer that one point two million dollars over to our operating fund. So excited about that, because that takes that two point three now down to really only a net of about one point one million dollars in our compensation and benefit lines. Jumping back up to our non-comp, we did have overall about one point five million dollars increase over what was originally budgeted, the bulk of that being our custodial services contract, and then additionally our, our fleet maintenance for our buses, which both of those you'll see in our FY twenty-four budget as some of our nondiscretionary increases. So what we're, what we're doing centrally to try to combat that, I, I mentioned the offsetting for our health benefits fund, but on a non-comp side, identified a little over a million dollars in, in central office lines that, that we can, we're going to hold and we're going to cut back on. Additionally, part of the school site transfer, we hold back fifteen percent at the beginning of the year of our school site transfer to make sure that all our revenues come in and kind of spread the expenditures out over the year. We released five percent of that, and so we're still holding back ten percent of our school site expenditures. And if the additional funds come in from the state, or if we start trending better than, in the coming thirty to sixty days, we can release the, the rest of the ten percent. But at this point, we feel it's in our best benefit to, to hold back the money from central office and the five, the ten percent from the school sites. We're going to be monitoring vacancies very closely and, and being selective over which ones we fill or we wait till July one to fill. One of the items in the compensation and benefits lines, you know, so some of that is as we're hiring more experienced teachers, it causes our total cost to go up. But additionally, we're seeing an increase in our transportation hourly lines as well, and so we're still exceeding the, the budget there. So overall, what does that mean? So we're, right now, a surplus of about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our, in our revenue, but a deficit in our expenditures of a little over a million. So about two hundred thousand dollars overall in the red per se. However, the VDOE calc error will, if we, if the State General Assembly comes through and actually holds us harmless for that, we'll very easily make correction of that. And we'll say even though we're showing an overall two hundred thousand dollars deficit there, I'm not overly concerned, because we always have additional non-compensation savings, so we just haven't sucked all that up from our departments and our school sites, because nobody spends every dollar of every budget. There's a, a few dollars remaining each year, several hundred thousand dollars. So between that, we'll start tracking even closely, more closely as we get more word from the state on, on what they're doing to correct the, the VDOE calc error. Any questions on the operating fund before I jump on some of our other funds?
Who would like to start? Okay, Ms. Guy?
The ten percent that you said that you're holding back from the school sites, I just want to understand, what does that mean? By marquee, what does that mean for a school? What do they not get?
Yeah, so that school site allocation goes from material supplies, it could be some, you know, additional clerical hourly, it could be field trip money, it could be sports, you know, trips. So, but, but I talked to, we actually had a principal's meeting today, and I talked to them, and I said, if there's anything that's pressing, let me know, and we're going to work with you. But, but right now, our goal is to stay in the positive for the year.
Yeah, I don't want to go to jail on that.
Then we'll release it as, as soon as we know we're safe to.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Guy, someone else? Anyone else? Ms. Chase, Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so you noted the central office savings, what, what are those things? Because a million dollars is a lot of money.
Yeah, so some of it is legal fees, that, that's not the bulk of it. Some of it came from our, our textbook lines that we were due either for adoption and stuff that we've been taking a closer look at, and, and that's been something we looked at in the twenty-three budget and the twenty-four budget and, and just getting tighter there. But just really quickly on the legal fee piece, that's something that, you know, a few years ago, we were, you know, so it's a kind of ebb and flow, depends on what type of cases we have going on. And, and, you know, luckily, last year and this year, we've been doing fairly well with not many cases that have been driving our legal fees up.
And, and I just want to note that we haven't seen this the entire time that I've been on the board so far, so this is distressing. Yeah, thank you.
And, uh, Ms. Halsted?
Can you, I just need to understand the transfer, the increase in the transportation hourly, was that, is that overtime money that's coming in? Or is that the increase in per hour rates?
So a little bit of both. So as hourly rates go up, it causes to go up, I tried to account for that in the budget last year. Now, when, when we actually cut some of the hourly budget for transportation last year, because we added a significant number of drivers, and the hope there was adding additional drivers will help relieve the load of our drivers, so they're not picking up as many runs, causing them to, to go over. We're just not seeing the benefit of that yet, and so we're still going over, because unfortunately, we've got to run the buses no matter what, and so we're, we're constantly in there. We have some drivers that are picking up double loads and, and stuff, and we've got that eliminated, we're just, we're just running over.
So how significant is that eight hundred thousand then? I mean, was, I mean, how, how much of an impact is that?
It's about roughly like seventy-five percent of the budget. I mean, we're, yeah, not even close there, which is why we've added it back in in FY twenty-four's budget.
Ms. Healy?
I want to follow up with Ms. Guy's question about that ten percent holdback on the school site transfer. I'm concerned that if we make that decision too close to the end of the year, they won't be able to use it for the intended purposes. So do we have a, a approximate date when we'll be able to, to make that decision? I mean, I'm assuming if we've approved a school site transfer, then they have planned for it and they're, you know, have a need, and it's probably not going to be the last month of school. And we only have a couple of months left.
Yeah, yeah, great question. So some of this depends on what the General Assembly does in the year and the next week or two. And so as soon as we get word that they're going to hold us harmless officially and, and they take a vote on that, then we can start taking steps on releasing that additional ten percent. I will say, you know, they know from the beginning, we've held back, actually, it used to be like thirty percent that we would hold back at the beginning of the year, and I, I thought that was crazy. So I said, no, we're just going to do fifteen percent, and then we'll release it sooner. So we've gotten to where it's only fifteen percent, and we release it a lot sooner than we have in, in previous years. With the school year moving up, they also typically in June actually start buying supplies for the following year to make sure we get them in time. So actually releasing it a little bit later, they'll still be able to try to get a head start on that, even if we don't release it until April, let's say.
Any other questions?
Well, yeah, they have to hold us harmless, right? Like, that's going to happen?
Okay.
I mean, but it, like, but, I mean, they're gonna, right?
I think the governors asked the, the House and the Senate to take care of that, and I'm not sure ask is the, the right verb, but I, I'm pretty comfortable in anticipating that we're going to be able to harmless, at least for this year. I don't know about next year.
Yeah, we definitely don't know about next year. So, okay.
So I still have some, I just want to touch on a few other funds.
Keep going.
Yep. So just quickly, the operating fund is the bulk of the funds where we, where we spend most of the dollars, but I just want to touch on a few of the other ones. Nutrition, we are running over a little bit there, but that's, I'll say, okay, because they have a very healthy reserve there, and part of that reserve is to help work through these times. So we actually have seen a little bit of a decrease in our lunch sales even from a pre-pandemic. Now, we knew we were going to saw, see a decrease from the last couple of years, where it was a hundred percent free, and everything was federally subsidized basically a hundred percent. So, but then we increased wages for nutrition, and so there's a little bit of a balancing act. Some of that deficit is also capital expenditures where we are spending down that reserve. So operating wise, it looks like we're in, you know, a two million dollar deficit there, but some of that is capital expenditures that we, that we're spending down. Fleet, I'm actually happy to say, you know, some of this is because of the amount of work we have to send to them, but for the last couple of years, that number has been where they've had a significant deficit. So we're actually where they are operating pretty efficiently now and are steadily keeping buses coming in and coming out, and county transportation vehicles as well. So they're pretty much looking at breaking even for the year. Health benefits, and this is, is truly mid-year numbers. Right now, showing a little bit of a surplus and looking at a projected surplus of the year of one point two five. And if you remember, it was about one point one that I was saying, I think we're going to just let the health benefits fund keep that instead of transferring it to the health benefits fund. So looking at, even with doing that, we'll still be in okay shape in the health benefits fund. Workers' comp, actually projecting a little bit of a surplus there, which is good, because we have seen the past few years of rising workers' comp costs, and we're actually saw a big drop this year. So hoping that continues for the remainder of this year and we see positive workers' comp claims, and by positive, I mean less claims. So just want to point out, and we're not going to do this tonight, depending on what comes from the General Assembly and how our other funds look, we don't, for our other funds, we don't need additional money from the county, but we have to get additional appropriation, because we're going, we're projected to go over our actual spending limit, the appropriation from the county. So we're not asking for additional funds, but would need to get that additional appropriation. This is common each year, depending on how close we are, we ask for that additional appropriation. I don't imagine it'll be an issue at all. The operating fund, we'll have to get our state revenue, whether it's the one point one or the two point six, we want to get that appropriated to cover the overage in our compensation lines. If we didn't get the additional one point five from the state, we could request a million dollars in carryover funds from the county. It would be one-time use money, and that would be the only thing that would be new money, but it would come out of, you know, the school's reserve account that's at the schools, and that could really be targeted towards covering our overage in our custodial account for this year. But not making a recommendation on that, I think we'll have a better idea when we get to March, what each of these looks like.
Okay, any questions on that? Ms. Guy?
Just really quickly, I understand the expenditures for the workers' compensation, but it says revenue zero.
Ah, yeah, great.
I just want to understand what would be, like, what would be a dollar? What, what is that?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I should have explained this, I talked about it in the, in the Fab C.
Yeah, and I, I was confused there too, I just.
Great, so this is actually, we're just a month behind. We transfer the money from our operating fund into the workers' comp fund, and we didn't do that by December thirty-one, we did it after. So when you look at the mid-year, we didn't transfer it. So that, all that money basically comes from our other funds, and we, we, it's budgeted in each fund, and then it gets transferred to our workers' comp fund, and it just hasn't happened yet. So it's still showing zero, but that will get made, and then the surplus at the end of the year is projected to be about two hundred and fifty thousand. Kind of just a timing issue, but thank you for pointing that out.
Ms. Healy?
I have a question on the appropriation.
Yes, ma'am.
About one. Now, is that because of the holdback of the county?
No.
To our funds?
No.
So how does this relate to our adopted budget?
So these would be an additional appropriation over the total adopted budget of three hundred and seventy-three million dollars. So, but, but we have the funds to cover it, because the state is providing it in the operating fund. So we have the additional funds, we just need the county to actually appropriate it, because we don't have the spending authority for it yet.
Go ahead.
So we have an adopted budget, but we're going to be asking for appropriation over and above that. We don't have to adopt or amend our budget for that? It sounds like we're going to be spending potentially more than we've budgeted for, what, that we adopted in our budget.
So I can cover that. Your, your budget is a, a spending plan. No budget actually lines up directly as, as you precisely intend it to be. Your budget plan is over in some areas, it's under in some areas, that's, that's somewhat normal. So as long as your appropriation request is within defined terms, is established by the fiscal entity that supports you or your funding partner across the street, which in this case is one million dollars, then you're, you're okay.
Well, I still go back to these changes. You know, I understand the range, I mean, we may have so much in one category and another amount somewhere else, and we may need to transfer and make changes, but that would all be within the umbrella of the adopted budget. So my question is, is this above, if this is above the amount that we adopted for our budget, the money's coming from somewhere, and you're saying it's coming from the state, I just.
So I'll give you an example.
Trying to put that into context with.
A great example of this would be, is you, you've effectively already amended your budget several times. And, and most notably, when you changed custodial vendors, you significantly amended your budget at that moment, because you expended intentionally above and beyond what you budgeted for, for that particular item. So to that, to that extent, you've kind of gone along in a handful of circumstances where you've made amendments to your budget effectively. Now, those amendments to your budget have not been ratified by the county, because you're under the threshold of what the county has appropriated to you, but now you'd be making an additional appropriation request within their internal controls for you to do so.
And this appropriation request comes in a resolution that you approved, which is virtually increasing the budget by the amount of the appropriation.
I, I get that, and I get the changes, but I'm, I'm thinking when we pay more for custodians, it's coming somewhere out of another category in our budget. But am, am I understanding correctly that, if you could put those numbers up there, because it's in the millions, right?
This one, or the appropriation?
The appropriation one.
That's what, yeah, yeah, sorry, that's what was there. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, no, I'm just, I'm just looking for. Well, yeah, but I mean, I'm, I'm, it's nice to have a visual. You know me, I'm the paper person, in this case, I'll take the screen. Well, I know, but I think it would be helpful for people to see what we're talking about. Oh, is it too late?
They can put them back up.
Okay, I'm just, I, I, trying to just understand this, because I'm not on the Fab C, and I did not go to that meeting, so I didn't have the advanced briefing. But this is money that is above and beyond the amount that we adopted in our budgets. Like, just in round figures, we adopted how much?
Three hundred and seventy-four million.
Three hundred and seventy-four million, and that's how much we were planning on. So this amount, which is, what's the total? What, what's the total here?
Between one point one or two point six.
Okay, so between one point one and two point six is going to be added to what we have.
Yes, ma'am.
And you're saying that's coming from state revenues?
Yes, ma'am.
So you, you didn't plan on that either, which is good news, is that you have additional revenues that you weren't planning on because your enrollment was higher. And you, we also weren't planning on the Virginia Department of Education having a mathematical error that we would have to account for either. So what he's saying is that depending on how the General Assembly deals with the mathematical error at the Virginia Department of Education, we will be in receipt of potentially between one point one and two point six million dollars. Now, that's a pretty significant difference, but there will be other things that we will have to pay for. We're, we're having additional revenue, we also have additional expenditures too. And a good example of those additional expenditures would be the custodial contract change, which was about a million dollar change. So you'd want the additional revenue appropriated to the school division to expend, because you're entitled to it per how the local composite index and the local ability to pay generates revenue for you based on the state formula.
So this is because we acquired more students and our average daily membership was higher. So that's where the extra money is coming from.
So all, all of this, one point one to two point six is increase in the average daily membership?
More, more of the one point one.
Okay, that.
Yes.
That answers the question, but then you throw in, you mentioned that this is part of this is the hold harmless. So, how does the hold harmless come in if it's all money that we're entitled to anyway?
Well, the 1.1 is more or less guaranteed because that was in the governor's budget. Now, originally, in the governor's count tool, it said 2.6. So, the hold harmless is covering the gap between the 1.1 and the 2.6, because they released a document that said, you're getting 2.6, and then six or seven weeks later, they said, oops, sorry, it was actually only 1.1. So, we know we're getting the 1.1, and the General Assembly is now meeting to discuss whether they want to award the school divisions and hold them harmless for that mathematical error.
So, that's the governor's budget based on our higher ADM?
Correct.
And so, imagine if we were a school division that was not growing, and we were a school division that actually had flat enrollment or was reducing enrollment, school divisions would be looking at a reduction in planned revenue, and at this point in the year, they would be having to make some very tough choices about how they would choose to finish out their year. The benefit for us is that because we are a growing school division, we know we're going to be net positive some revenue. The question is how much?
That's good. It's a plus for growth. I always hear all the negatives, so...
This week. It'll change next week.
Thank you.
And something we talked about at Fab C as well is this is probably not going to be a year we get a lot of 3R projects done at the end of the year.
Sad.
Which we rely on because it's one of our primary methods of cash funding our projects.
Sad. Okay, Ms. Guy?
Just to make it make more sense in my head, how many, how many, what did we grow by? Is it 250 kids about from the beginning of the school year?
Oh, no.
Was it from, is it from January or August?
From September till now, it's about 250.
And those 250 kids cost about an extra 2.6 million?
So, that's 250 kids beyond projection.
Beyond projection, okay.
So, that's in addition to the 600 kids.
Yes, but I, my brain was already there for them. But, those extra 250, is, does that cost like an extra 2.6 million?
That's what we would, we're planning in revenue, at least 1.1 minimum, potentially more than that.
Yeah, those are, those are students that we have to transport from home to school.
Yeah, I was just trying to...
Provide teachers, yeah.
Like, when we grow by 100 kids, might be 100 million, right? Or, I'm sorry, 1 million. Sorry. You know, I told you all I don't math. That's why we have him. Okay. I'm just trying to make it make sense in my head. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Chris, or Dr., Mr. Fulmer. All right, next up is the superintendent reports and comments. Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the risk of beating a dead horse, I'll take one more whack and say, if anyone questions whether or not the school division is parsimoniously funded, I think you have your answer for today. We are incredibly lean and operating as tightly as humanly possible, and to go two consecutive years, having to make really tough decisions in the middle of a year is not only frustrating, but definitely not a sign of progress and certainly something that should aggravate our community. I think our community deserves a much better resourced school system, so that its school system can be better. So, to that end, Happy Valentine's Day. I'm so delighted to spend this holiday with you, and I know our team is, too. There's still no inclement weather in the forecast, which of course is a blessing, but we could use at least one day. I think we're all ready for at least one snow day, so fingers crossed on that. I know the staff that are here celebrating Valentine's Day with the board also wish for at least just one snow day, right? Special thanks to all that came out to our Budget Town Halls and to the public hearing this evening. Thank you for your feedback and for your support. We have some pretty ambitious goals over the next several years, but the investments in public education in Stafford County that we proposed are necessary. This is a step-by-step process and certainly not any effort to eat the entire apple all in one bite, but rather to do this over several years. That in and of itself is frustrating and a challenge when we see that other agencies and other parts of our county do receive a lot more support, and historically, our proportion of county revenue continually goes down. I'd also like to thank the school board and our student representatives in particular. Being on the school board is a tough and thankless job. I appreciate you especially in the month of February, when it can be a little bit grueling to go to meeting after meeting every week and to engage in these tough discussions and the very rigorous budget calendar that we have for the public-facing part of our budget process, and you all do it so well. And I'm just so delighted in the, in the last 14 months, how far we've come in such a short period of time, and of course, so optimistic about where we're going in the future. I'd also like to thank our teachers and our parents and our students who've worked hard to make Stafford County a great place. I know that when our school board adopts its budget in two weeks, we will need many hands and many voices to communicate our needs to the Board of Supervisors, who has the discretionary authority to make some decisions that could improve the lives of our staff and our students dramatically with just one vote. We want to bring back the community into our schools. I have a huge announcement that I'm excited to share today. This week, we will launch our Good Neighbor Network. This will be a link on our website and an opportunity to connect our learning community with service activities for other people in our community. Our students and our citizens will be able to collaborate on opportunities throughout the county. Look for more information to come in the upcoming issues and additions of Elevate Weekly, but effectively, this is an opportunity for folks to indicate their interest in connecting with our schools, to request performance groups, to request service from some of our kids, and also to stay connected to our school community. I give huge praise to our Chief Communications Officer, Sandra Osborne, and her team for putting this very ambitious project together, but it is time to bring our schools into our community and our community into our schools. Some very wise people in the Celebrate neighborhood in South Stafford County had given us some great advice about how they could connect with our schools, and this is in the spirit of supporting that initiative. We've got a couple of important announcements to make. On Saturday, February 25th, the school division will host two important student showcases. The social studies showcase will take place at Drew Middle School from 9:00 to 1:00, and later that evening, from 2:00 to 4:30 in the evening, North Stafford High School will host the annual Black History Celebration, featuring student-led performances. We're very proud of our kids and can't wait to see them in those two very important showcases. We are also excited to meet our newest learners. This spring, on March 1st, we have the opportunity to kick off kindergarten registration, where we will have that at our Professional Development Center, which is at this complex from 10:00 to 7:00. We will have interpreters for Spanish as well as Dari Pashtu available to assist families with online registration. Please share this information with your friends and neighbors. We'll be publishing this widely throughout our community. We are looking for a great turnout for our kindergarten registration and to make some of those important connections between some of our younger littles coming into our school division and meeting their new schools. On March 4th, we'll host our first-ever Division I'M Determined event, focused on providing resources and opportunities for our students with disabilities and their families. This unique event will take place from 8:00 in the morning to 2:00 PM at Mountain View High School. We'll have a keynote speaker, Talia Thomas, who is a graduate of Stafford Schools. Talia is a future educator and the recipient of the Stafford Education Foundation's Future Educator Scholarship. We're really excited about this event. It's kind of like a conference for some of our students with disabilities and their families. It's a great way for them to build up confidence and to learn some self-advocacy tools as well, and a great way for us to be setting the marker about how we support students with disabilities and their families in Stafford County. Spring break is also almost upon us, hard to believe, but our school buildings will be closed to visitors for the week of March 13th through the 17th. For some, this can be a time of great stress, so in Stafford Schools, our nutrition department and the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank are partnering up to provide spring break meal kits for our families in need. Distribution to families will be held on Friday, March 10th, and we'll, of course, also share out information about this, at Colonial Forge High School from 3:30 in the afternoon to 6:00 PM. Families who would like to take advantage of this assistance should come to use the traffic signal that's near the front of the school. Distribution will be set up as a drive-through location in the student parking lot, and there'll be lots of signs and people to direct traffic. Volunteers will also be there to assist families and to help load up some vehicles with some nutritious food for the break. I'll close with a reminder that this Friday is a professional learning day in Stafford County, so students, you don't have to report, so it's kind of like a snow day for you in February, but unfortunately, it doesn't look like there's going to be snow in the forecast, and Monday is a holiday, so we've got a nice long weekend for our families coming up. Please take this time to rest and recharge. As our students, you definitely deserve a bit of a break, and our families enjoy some family time, and our teachers absolutely need a bit of a break as well. So, thank you so much, Madam Chair. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Okay, next up are the board member comments. Let's start with Ms. Halsted.
Usually have to volunteer. Today, you picked me. Thank you.
Do we need to set a timer?
No. No. I wrote some stuff down, but, so, I really want to do two things. One, I want to thank our SROs specifically for, and I think it's fitting that their day is, as I understand, is tomorrow, but they should really be applauded every day because it's been, there's been some tough times lately, so I just want to shout out to them. But, also to really, Catherine was nervous about her comments earlier, and I was like, don't worry, I got you. I've got some things to say tonight that I think I need to bring some hardcore reality to the folks, and so I'm glad that she was able to share her thoughts originally on it. So, I'm going to talk about some things tonight that matter and that keep me up at night when I look at our student population. And so, I did a little research, and I want to go over to some statistics with everybody for a minute if I could. So, in 2020, there were 3,142 deaths on the roadway that were attributed to distracted driving. Drugs and alcohol are present in 40% of traffic accidents where someone is killed. In drivers aged 15 to 19, texting and driving is responsible for 7% of the fatalities. 587 deaths, these are all Virginia statistics, by the way. This is on their teen driving website. 587 deaths of individuals who were not occupants of any vehicles. They were pedestrians, bikers, killed by distracted drivers. Prior to 2019, there was a steady rate of death due to drug overdoses in adolescents, approximately 2.4 per 100,000. That's roughly 518 children. So, I dug a little bit deeper into this. In 2020, this rose to 4.57, and in 2021, it was 5.49 roughly, or 1,146 kids per 100,000. So, our kids are clearly telling us something. In 2019, there was a 30% increase in suicides. That was from the rate of 2000 to 2016. It went up across all age groups, but adolescents present the biggest concerns due to their access and use of social media, the increase of anxiety and depression, and self-inflicted injuries. Self-harm was the biggest indicator for that. 50% of girls aged 15 to 24 said their first sexual interaction was unwanted or involuntary. 40% of teenage girls get pregnant once before the age of 20, and 80% of these pregnancies are unplanned. In 2020, young people aged 15 to 24 years accounted for 53% of new STIs. Chlamydia was the first diagnosed STI, sexually transmitted infection, in teens, most diagnosed, sorry, at 62%. 1.6 million new cases were recorded. Gonorrhea has increased by 45% in this age population, syphilis by 52%, and congenital syphilis by 235%. Mississippi, surprisingly enough, as I was doing this research, you know how the internet follows you, I get an article that says Mississippi is seeing a 1,000% increase in the number of newborns with syphilis currently. In 2020, only 50%, 50% of sexually active adolescents reported using a condom at any point during intercourse. I struggle with this data because in a three-year period, while we looked at COVID-19, the CDC provisional data, this is three years' worth of data, 997 deaths in three years, but we spent more time, money, we lost more educational, emotional, and mental health, dove ourselves into a crisis, and fought harder for that than we fight for any of the other things I mentioned. So, that weighs on me pretty hard. We have a strange habit of comparing things to the number of students in our schools, and I get it. Six students out of 30,000 doesn't sound like a lot unless you're the parent of one of the six, then it's a lot. Then, you want this school board and our administrators to be worried only about that issue. There's so many variables that impact our children and their ability to achieve the goals. This board has, the goals that we've given the superintendent, that this board sat down and gave the superintendent and his staff to fulfill. So, without acknowledgement and tacit consent with each other, we need to work together on these issues, no matter how much we disagree to get to the end. I believe we're setting our children up for failure. We need to overcome some serious double standards we've been allowing ourselves to get dived into, and by we, I'm not saying we, I'm saying we, the general population. I think that we need to overcome age-old agendizing of our children. I think we need to pay attention to what's happening in our schools. We like to talk about all the good things that happen, and I want to talk about that school because it makes me feel really good, but the problem is, is that I've got Catherine here, and she's telling me what the problems are that they're worried about, and so that has to mean something to me. And so, even though when I read and I dug and I read and I dug, I was up literally for night, like, trying to figure out how I can empower, help through policy empower these kids to get through this time period in your life. And so, I dug more, and here's what I found. These are the headlines over a two-and-a-half-week period across our tri-state area. I didn't go too far. Maryland County reported a 120% rise in overdose deaths among their high school students. Social media was responsible for the shooting deaths of four high school students. Three high schoolers are dead, one went to prison. There was a middle schooler allegedly sexually assaulted in the bathroom. The child, there were seven children admitted for a 72-hour psych hold. Elementary school child threatens self-harm and harm to others. Elementary child shoots teacher after numerous warning signs. Police called to middle or high school after a fight broke out. Student assaults another by slamming them into the ground. Student threatens a teacher with harm after months of being verbally abusive to the teacher. Middle school student sends an inappropriate naked graphic photo text to the entire school. Eight students charged with assault in a fight that is gang-related. 13-year-old arrested after following a fatal crash with the car they stole. And I could go on, but I want you to get my point. We're in trouble. Our kids are in trouble, and I believe that it's part, our policies need to reflect the reality that I've just presented to you. A while ago, we made the mistake of coining the term "new normal." That's a mistake. We're now in trouble, and I believe our kids are in trouble, too. We cannot continue to fight among ourselves about the realities that our kids face today. We don't vote for policy or change that makes sense because we don't want to offend someone. We don't want someone to be outraged or disgusted or whatever, but yet, if that policy's not in place and our child is harmed and something happens, the outrage is even bigger. So, I believe we need to really start using the voice of these students. They're the boots on the ground every day, living with this stuff. Someone stood up here once, and I want to just go back really quick and just talk for a second about what I mean about double standard. We fought a policy not too long ago by people telling us that our kids needed to be confronted with challenges anyway, and it was the school's job to teach them about those challenges. But then, that same policy, it wasn't about challenging the students or challenging for them. It was about trying to get everyone recognized as a whole. It was a statement by, it was, there was a statement by someone that came up here and talked about the separation of church and state. That was one week after we pa, or one meeting after, we, they stood up here to tell us that we needed to take more school days off for religious holidays, which is fine by me, but then after that, an email came in from a group that demanded our teachers heard, the demand, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that, that requested we take back the holiest day of the year from Christians. I got that email. I don't know if anybody else did. We have organizations that demand our teachers be heard, all by sending a large population of their membership underground to secret meetings because they're afraid of retaliation. That's a double standard. That doesn't make sense to me. What's happening in our schools isn't normal. What's happening to our kids isn't normal adolescent behavior. I don't care how you paint it. It's not normal. It's dangerous, and it's our job to fix it. I think we are uniquely poised to fix it, but only if we're supported by strong policies and strong leaders willing to fight for what's right and not politically correct. I believe Stafford County has that backing them up. I believe Stafford County has that, backing them up. But I do believe that there is some very big weaknesses in our policies that need changing. So not to be a total downer, I'm going to end Valentine's Day with a note of love. I love that we have kids who will stand up and call on me, you, everyone here on this board, the superintendent and their principal to help them. I love that I am, and fellow ladies here, to give voices to the children who feel both that they don't have one or that theirs was taken away, and I love that we have the ability to impact these children, these children, every day by offering them a chance for a bright and beautiful future. I love that Catherine and Maraki are here with us to give voice to these concerns and to ask us to listen to them and fix the problems. I just pray that we get it right.
Thank you, Ms. Halsted. Ms. Guy?
I don't know why I'm laughing. Okay. Happy Valentine's Day to everyone. I'm impressed that so many of you are still here, because, you know, it's Valentine's Day. I'm super excited about the Good Neighbor Initiative. I didn't write it down, so, well, I was trying to write it down, but you went fast, so I didn't know if it was called Good Neighbor Initiative or whatever, but I love that, because I'm a good neighbor. And I truly believe that this year, we're going to have more citizens fighting to get our schools funded. Excuse me, this is my time, I'm reclaiming it. All right. I really do think we're going to have a lot of people to get us to get funded. And in the spirit of the Good Neighbor Initiative, when we get funded, because I think it's going to happen, because it has to happen, otherwise, like, what are we going to do? We need to look out for, for people who are going to be-
I can find that person in your contacts.
Mm-hmm. Somebody's on their phone at a meeting. Anyway, we need to look out for some of the people who are marginalized and who have, who are socially, socio-economically disadvantaged, because in order for us to get funded, our taxes will go up, and they should go up. Sometimes, you know, that has to happen. No one wants to, you know, but it's, sometimes it just has to occur. So I just hope that Stafford, which I think is filled with the best people on the planet, can, can remember what it is to be a good American, a good citizen, and to look out for our neighbors, especially our elderly, our single-income families, because as, you know, I've been a stay-at-home mom for 20 years, it's not easy having seven people on one income or even two people on one income, depending on what your income is. So I just want us to, to think about other people when, when we do get our budget passed, because it's a, it's a big one, but it is necessary. And then the other thing I wanted to say is, I'm going to be having an, a kindergarten town hall, not as official as the one that Dr. Taylor and, and the cabinet is going to put on here. It's just going to be super informal for first-time parents or of kids who are coming into public school to just ask questions, you know, what, what happens? You know, there's a lot of stay-at-home parents, or you've just been working from home and your kid has been there, but it's hard to cut the cord. I, I know, I had my friends freaking out when they sent their kids to kindergarten. I was pushing my kids to go, but they were freaking out. So I just want to be a resource to any Stafford resident who's having any issues or any questions or, you know, I think most of the stuff is done online, but I could help fill out paperwork if necessary. So that's going to be on Thursday, March 9th, and I don't know where, because I have not found a free location yet, might be at my house, but I will definitely let everyone know, and I'll put it on my social media, and hopefully you guys will share it out for me as well. And that's it. I hope everyone gets home safely.
Thank you. Ms. Healy?
Thank you. I want to thank all those who came to the Rock Hill Budget Town Hall, people in Rock Hill and people not in Rock Hill that came, and we had a very positive response from the audience there. I say "audience" because Dr. Taylor gave his full presentation, which he must be, he could probably do that from heart, doing that how many times, getting to double digits almost. But I, I think it's important that the community be aware of what's under consideration, and, you know, we, we will have to make the decision as a board as to what budget we're going to approve, and we'll be doing that two weeks from now, and between now and then, we're going to have another work session and probably a lot more discussion, a lot more to, to read and consider. But we had a very positive response at, at the Rock Hill Town Hall, and I understand, you know, there was a lot of response throughout the, the other ones that were held, but the, the main message was that the community supports the schools. And I think, thanks to Dr. Taylor, we are looking at schools not just for providing the education, but for the role they play in the community and the importance they have. And to use one of his phrases, the ROI, the return on investment, because when we have excellent schools, it's going to make our community more attractive, and it's going to help everyone, and that's the first thing I say to people that say, "I don't have kids in school, it really doesn't affect me," and I'm like, "Yeah, it does, because it affects your quality of life, it affects your, your property values." You know, the better our schools, the more attractive we're going to be as a community. And I think we're certainly, you know, going to have a strong voice, and, and I'm hearing some support from some of the folks across the street that, that understand and, and support education. So, you know, we just need to continue to, to move forward, but it is going to be our budget that we're going to approve, and we really need to be looking at what's, what's going to be in there. The other thing I, I wanted to, to thank our student representatives for their report. It's not easy to solicit, you know, responses, especially when everyone's schedules are so busy, so I think you, you did a great job, and really excited about the blog and the, you know, the, the plans for the future. I don't know how you're doing this on top of your workloads and everything else you have going on, but thank you. And also to, you know, Maraki and Catherine both. I'm, I'm looking forward, you know, to hearing more from you and from the student perspective, because I, I think as Ms. Halsted said, we, you know, we need to listen, and not just listen, but we need to act. So that's something we, as a board, are going to have to be thinking about, and I think a very good start is the report on what are the, the primary issues. I mean, violence, drug use, mental health, you know, drug and alcohol use, suicide prevention. I mean, these, these are all, you know, really heavy issues, but, but we, we do need to see what we can do to help, because we, you know, we, we talk about mental health, and we get to social workers, and we get to counselors, and we're doing all that, but, you know, are we doing enough or are we doing the right things? You know, it may not be more resources, it's how we're, we're, we're targeting those resources, and what can we do even to enlist students to, to, to help here as well. So I'd suggest that we consider, after getting through the budget this month, we'll have, we'll have a month little break from when we get the, the response from the supervisors, when we have to go through another round of budget-heavy discussions. And so we, we consider in, in March having a, a work session to address these issues that the, the students' representatives have identified, and perhaps ask them to even, you know, lead that work session with, you know, some assistance from, you know, us and, and from, you know, staff as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Healy. Ms. Sigman?
I was, it has cleared out a bit, but I was thinking when I got here, who knew this would be the happening place on Valentine's Night? We were pretty crowded here at the start of the night, so thanks to those of you who stuck with us. I also wanted to thank everyone who participated in our budget town halls this season, including those who attended ours last night. Ms. Halsted and I had our Garrisonville-Hartwood Town Hall. We had a lot of great conversation and some really good questions. In fact, an attendee asked a question when he learned that we were ranked 112th out of 133rd in the state for our per-perennial expenditure. He wanted to know who our peers were, who were at 111 and 113, and I thought that was a great, great question. So I had our little elves here look that up for me, and they are Henry County, which is 7,000 students, and Pennsylvania County at 8,000 students. They are actually adjacent counties and right at the center, at the bottom of Virginia, on the North Carolina line. So I found that pretty interesting. Apart from that, I wanted to address a couple of topics today. First, it's to the parents, and that's talk to your kids. I didn't know what Catherine was going to talk about tonight, I'm so glad she did. As board members, we get a daily snapshot of what's happening in our schools and on our buses. When I look at the second half of last year and the first half of this year, there is no comparison. Our kids are acting out in every school, at every age level. My first piece of advice is to check your kids' technology. If your child uses it, check it often, whether it's their personal cellphone, your home computer, or the school-issued computer, check it. What happens online does not happen in a vacuum. Threats of violence, bullying behavior, though conducted virtually, have real consequences in our schools. In addition to this, it's time to have the hard conversations with our kids about substance abuse, violence, self-harm. If your child is not experiencing these things firsthand, they're seeing it or they're hearing about it. Talk to them, truly. My second topic tonight, surprisingly, is on the budget. We heard a lot today, and throughout this budget season in general, about keeping the lights on, about our salaries, our benefits, buses, fuel, those are all crucial to what we do every day. But you know what else is crucial? Space. So let's talk again about growth. At this time last year, 2022, we projected we'd add 600 students by September 30th. Mr. Wright was right on the money. Our supervisors saw the writing on the wall. They approved the construction of a new elementary school, proposed to hold about 972 students, and this year, we're predicting another 400-student increase. We've asked the supervisors to consider Elementary 19 as well. We need to stop ignoring that growth. Today, we have three schools with trailers. Next year, it is going to be many more. If we continue to grow at approximately 500 students per year, well, let's do the math. The Sigman kids attend Anthony Burns Elementary, which may be the last school in this county to, that was built to accommodate growth. The first class at Anthony Burns graduates college this year. Let that sink in. Anyone know what 15 times 17, 500 times 17 might be? It's a lot. For me, one of the reasons I supported the move to put Hartwood at the top of our CIP, replacing Drew, is because if Drew were condemned or closed tomorrow, we have space in our other middle schools to accommodate those students, as inconvenient and heartbreaking that is. If Hartwood came to the same space, we don't, if fate, we don't have that space. And it takes so long to get temporary structures, AKA trailers, that we couldn't even use that as a solution either. How sad is that? Both of those things, that we have to consider. I would not even be surprised if our superintendent called us and told us one of our buildings had to be closed, because a major system failed, and it wasn't, we weren't able to house our kids there. In fact, we probably have, but at least for a day or a couple, but it's heartbreaking. So, as you advocate for your support for our budget, I am asking to please consider adding a line or a paragraph or a sentence in there about advocating for Elementary 19 as well. Our elementary students whose classroom is literally made out of bookshelves in the corner of a library, they will thank you. Our art and music teachers who are operating off carts will thank you. Our administrators who have to worry about the function and safety of trailers will thank you. Our learning, our LD teachers, speech pass, gifted resource teachers, PARAs, all those others who provide additional learning support to our kids on tables in hallways, alcoves, vestibules, doorways, they'll thank you. And I'm thanking you now, and I'm thanking you for being here, not just here in the room, but in the county. I want to thank you for listening, for reading, for writing, for calling, for paying attention. So thank you as we go through this process. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Sigman. Dr. Warner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I do want to also reiterate that I appreciate all the people who've attended the town halls. I think one of the things that we've been trying to do for the last year is to increase the amount of transparency and show people how, how the sausage is made, what we're trying to do. We have been working to set clear goals and what we hope to achieve. Teacher retention and teacher recruitment have been top priorities ever since I've been on the board. We have been working to improve the compensation scale, but that's not enough. We need to also fix the compensation scale for our service workers and for our PARAs. Those things are not, the PARAs are not currently in the budget to try to put them on the same scale like the teachers are, and I think that's an important, an important thing to consider. They're a vital part of our school community. I have been visiting the middle schools, and it's been one of the things I have put on the, the back burner for the last couple of years with COVID and everything else, but I do want to thank the principals at HH Poole and Rodney Thompson and Gail Middle School, and I will be visiting a couple others this week. I want to say that what I, one of the things that truly impresses me is that, being in the schools, I've been in a lot of schools, I only have five more left to visit this year. I see the kids have changed so much since the beginning of the year till now, that they seem to kind of have their, they seem to kind of know what they're doing. They seem to kind of gotten it together. But I do think that there are ways that parents need to help us. Parents need to talk to their kids about the technology. We can't block websites if they're using cellular data. We can't control what one kid is showing another kid on their, on their cell phones. We can't control what they're taking pictures of and what maybe they're sharing with their friends. We can't control that, as much as we might like to. Unless you want us to ban school, phones in the schools, which I'm personally in favor of, there's no way that we can control that. So it's imperative that parents talk to their kids about it. It's just the way it is. There are things that we can do in the schools, there are things that we can't. There are problems we can solve, there are problems we can't solve. I do like the idea that the community partnership and bringing community back into our schools and bringing our schools out to the community so that they know what we're doing, so they can see the success of some of our students, they can see how well we are preparing our students for the future. Let's see. And, oh, the last thing I'm going to ask is we need the community to advocate. We need you to advocate with the board of supervisors. It's one thing if we pass the budget, it's one thing if we make the budget request, but until the board of supervisors authorize that or give us the number, there's, we have no idea where that's going to land. And we need a lot, because we have been barely keeping the lights on for the last three years, and it's just that we haven't been sufficiently funded, we haven't been investing in new schools, and it's starting to show, and it's starting to, the cracks are starting to show, and it's going to take a lot to climb out of the hole. So this year's budget is going to be a big ask, and we can't get it unless we have the community advocating with us. So, keep up the support. We are trying to be more transparent. We do the town halls to help share what we are doing with you and to show you what our budget looks like, but we need you to go to the board of supervisors' meetings and help us advocate. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Chase?
All right. So I attended the CGS governing board meeting in January, and after getting Dr. Taylor's permission, I agreed to serve as chair, and you may wonder why I had to get his permission. Well, he is now the executive superintendent for CGS, so I didn't want to sign him up for that without his agreement. And I'm excited to report that we will be having a retreat in the next month to review the constitution and bylaws and make sure that we're doing the best we can with the program. I also want to thank Dr. Taylor and all the staff who worked to put together the budget town halls this past week. It was great to hear directly from people in my district. I want to thank the supervisors from across the street who took the time from their busy schedules to attend our town halls. In addition, there were several people at the town halls who are serving on our advisory committees. I'm so grateful to these individuals for stepping up and helping to make our schools the best they can be, and I want to commend Dr. Taylor and his team for the great job they did recruiting people to serve on our school board advisory committees this year. I recently read a comment to an article about the superintendent's budget proposal. Dr. Taylor has proposed a 5% across-the-board salary increase and then adjustments to make our salaries scale more competitive. It was noted that the state may increase their budgeted salary increase from 5% to 7%, but of course, we have to remember that that will only be funds for standards of quality positions, not all positions. At any rate, this commenter asked, "How many Stafford residents get 7% raises?" Well, I'm a Stafford County resident who works in Maryland, and in August, I got a 9% raise. And then Larry Hogan, the Republican governor in, of Maryland, along with the Democratic legislature, gave all state employees an additional 3% raise effective November 1st. Of course, my other job on this school board, the stipend has not increased in over 20 years, but we won't talk about that. But we, we don't have to cross the Potomac to find employers providing 7% raises. We just have to cross Route 1. It is my understanding that the board of supervisors- It is my understanding that the Board of Supervisors gave all of the sheriff deputies a 15% raise this past fall. So, I am cautiously optimistic that our supervisors will wanna treat teachers and staff equally well. Um, and then one other comment, uh, I just wanna, um, sort of mention that when we suggest that parents talk to their children, that we remember that, that some parents are, are really busy. Um, they are both commuting, multiple parents commuting to Northern Virginia, or there's a single parent who's working jobs and all that. And so not all parents have time to talk to their children. Um, and unfortunately, that then falls on our teachers, and I hope that we treat our teachers well in our budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Okay, so my turn. Um, Happy Valentine's Day to all the gals and pals out there, and thank you very much for sitting with us this evening, and, um, hi Mom. Anyways, [laughing] 'cause she's always on. He might not be watching, but hi, honey. Um, I, I wanted to say that I was able to attend a Listen and Learn that Dr. Taylor did at Hartwood. I've been also able to attend community engagements with, along with other board members, um, at Gail and Rocky Run to discuss Elementary School 18. I was asked to speak at the PTA Council that Dr. Taylor has put together. Um, and really, it just enlightened and enjoyed talking to all the parents that work really hard to bring the communities into the schools, along with the staff and, at, at their schools. I was able to attend a literacy night at Ferry Farm, and next week, they're gonna have their STEM night. And since literacy and numeracy were some of our board goals, um, I would encourage any and other schools to invite the other board members, if they have not already attended, to attend. Um, it gives us a chance to firsthand see, um, how things are differentiated in the building for all types of learners, and it's, and how inclusive they were for all the learners there. Um, I am serving on the Parks and Rec as a liaison, and one of the things that, uh, they were discussing is hiring, uh, help this summer at Falmouth Beach. Last summer, they put out a call for help, and they got no one. So, they are once again asking for help for student employment. Uh, I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, I would also like to thank Dr. Taylor and his communications, and the, um, community at large at Celebrate. Um, that's also where my mom lives. Um, but they had, uh, they allowed us to come and have an event there. We brought with us the, um, choral group from North Stafford High School, and we also brought the culinary arts students from, uh, Stafford High School. They got standing ovations, because what was really cool about, when I talked to my mom and said, "Hey, I'd love to come," she hates I say this, sorry. Um, I, you know, "Would love to come and talk to your community about working with our schools." She said, "Well, we don't have kids in schools." And I said, "Exactly." So, going into that community, Dr. Taylor asked a very important question. "How many of you in this audience have been educators of any kind?" There was over 100 people in attendance, and over a third of the room stood up. And in fact, uh, Mr. Doolittle, who was a school board member, was in attendance in the audience, as well as a woman who babysat me, and I babysat her kids. But it was really interesting to see when we start talking about our CTE programs, um, and, um, just our, even, they even asked about Governor's School, IB. They thanked us for the turf fields, thought that was really great. Um, there was just a number of hits that we hit on. You know, "Hey, if you have a golf cart parade, why not have our marching band lead off for you?" Um, just little things where it wasn't, "What can you do for us, but how can we help to serve you?" Because there's a mutual benefit to that. And that is also encompassing what we have been doing with our Town Halls. There's a level of community of our students and our parents, but there's other, there's a larger part of our community that doesn't have kids in school. And we still need to reach them too. I invited them to come to Band Together. Several of them took me up, and we're just absolutely amazed at that production of all the high schools performing together for a community service. Um, these are things they don't know, but they're learning, and they want more. They want opportunities to come in, and they want opportunities where maybe they're having a difficult time and could use a little singer at their door, or, um, have, helping them lift heavy things from their attics or their basements. Just simple things, it benefits our kids, and it benefits their community. So, we just, you know, I'm really just proud of this board for all the reaching out that they've done in the communities, in the schools. But this is a community that is, it's like a cruise ship on land. And they are really excited about doing things. Um, and I know we have many more citizens like that in our community. I also got to be in part of a, a prize patrol, um, to deliver awards to not only students, which is always so fun, but teachers, and paras, and principals, and counselors. To be able to recognize and award just the ones that are in the grit every day, but just shine. And so, it's just so fun. One of the things that I got to do was go to Grafton Elementary School to recognize, uh, Ms. Donna, the bus driver, whose bus tipped over sadly. Um, I got to meet all of the kids and their parents. That's a way different experience than just talking to the bus driver and thanking her, but seeing her face and their faces light up when they saw her walk in the room. She could've been Michael Jordan. They just gravitated to her, hugged her, she put her arms out and said, "Get in here." And I think her arms actually stretched twice as wide, 'cause I don't know that she didn't have all 11 of them encompassed in one giant hug. But it's really touching when you know, and talk to the kids. "How was it?" Not one of them didn't say, "Scary," but they were all very appreciative, as were the parents for Ms. Donna. And that, that's just a nugget of what we have. We have Ms. Donnas, and we have so many in our staff involved with our kids that are thought of just as bright as Ms. Donna. And so, so, so grateful for just these little nuggets of things that we all get to do and see. And that's why, when it comes to, uh, fighting for this budget, it's, it's easy to do, because we see that, we know that, and we want more of that. And so, to have everything that we can get for our teachers is why we do what we do. And, you know, our board set some goals last summer. And I just wanted to say that one of them was to visit every school, like, we're all supposed to be trying to do it within our term, that's one of our goals too. Thank you, Dr. Chase, for the challenge. Um, but, and I'm doing really good. But, um, also, every single one of our schools has been visited by a board member, either for an award, a tour, a program. And, you know, Dr. Taylor, when I asked him in November, I said, "Can you send out the concert schedule?" And he went to all of the middle schools, uh, elementary and high schools, and got their schedule to post out, and even send out to celebrate. Um, but those are just some opportunities for us to celebrate our, not only our students, but our teachers. And Mr. Dodario has invited all of us to attend Metamorphosis on February, I'm gonna get it wrong, 22nd, from, uh, and I would, oh wait, did I say that wrong? Twenty?
It's a Thursday.
23rd, okay, 23rd. And I would like to, at 7 o'clock at Stafford High School, because they're performing Metamorphosis that they're gonna be taking to the Southeastern Theater Conference in Lexington, Kentucky. They won the whole thing last year. We wanna make sure that they get a really fabulous send-off to this next competition. That's a teacher who has gone over and above and beyond, and is amazing. And then, now he's gonna get to take his ki, another group of kids to do it again. That's really tough, coming out of COVID, and coming up and retooling your whole project and, and craft in order to have success like that for your students. So I encourage you to support our arts, support our teachers, support your board in trying to help get the funding that we need, not only for our teachers, but for spaces. Spending so much money on trailer spaces is not an answer. We need our building spaces. And we're grateful that we got ES 18. We're grateful that we have High School 6. But our complete sentence is ES 18 and 19. That's the whole sentence. We can't stop, so we need help. And I just wanted to, uh, thank everyone again for being here tonight. Thank everyone again for attending our Town Halls. Please keep sending emails to us. Please support us when it's time to go across the street. And with that, we have, we're gonna comment? Yeah. Um, I'd like to close by saying that we have a budget meeting, February 21st, at 5 o'clock, and February 28th, also at 5 o'clock for a special-called meeting. And that is the end. Motion to adj, oh no, I don't need a motion, we're just adjourning.
No, okay.
No clickers, no clickers. Thank you, have a good night.
Are we about to all vote that they get the same time as October 3rd?
Yeah.
Is it?
No.